Good morning, Jean.
Good morning, Rhonda. Have a great morning.
Thank you as well.
All right.
Retired Fire Chief Tony Bowden, if you can hear me, it doesn't appear that your audio or has connected in a way that you would be able to speak, so you may want to restart your Zoom application.
Good morning, Rhonda.
Good morning, Vice President Ellenberg.
Sound good?
Sounds great. You have a wonderful. You have the best day ever.
You too.
Tony, it looks like your audio is connected now.
I got it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Good morning, Rosio.
Good morning.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Good morning, Noreika.
Good morning. How are you?
Good thanks. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Now we try that again. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good morning, President Wasserman.
Cheers, Rhonda.
How are you today?
I'm doing all right. Thank you.
Also entering the room is Supervisor Semidion.
There we go. Let's do it, Rhonda. We'll call them.
All right.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Supervisor Lee.
Good morning. Hi, present.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Semidion.
Here.
Vice President Ellenberg.
I'm here.
And President Wasserman.
Here as well. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Nancy. We'll now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Semidion will be leading today's pledge. For all of you that can stand, please do so. Supervisor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn to Supervisor Chavez for today's invocation guest.
Thank you so much, colleagues. It's really an honor for me to get to introduce the President of the United Farm Workers, Teresa Romero. In honor of Cesar Chavez Day on March 31st, we're having this very special invocation. As you all know, Cesar Chavez was a labor leader, an organizer, and a civil rights activist whose legacy inspired all Americans. Match of his career actually was here in San Jose, and he dedicated his life to the cause and the struggle of farmworkers in the U.S. to improve their working and living conditions. Along with Dolores Huerta, he co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, which later merged with the Agricultural Workers Organizing Committee to become the United Farm Workers. That's why I'm excited to introduce our invicator this month, Teresa Romero, the third president of the United Farm Workers. Teresa is the first Latina and first immigrant woman to become president of a national union in the nation's history. Teresa became the third president in December 2018 and was formerly the union's number two as Secretary Treasurer. Having Teresa with us today is special and symbolic, both in honoring Cesar Chavez, but also Women's History Month. Teresa received the Awatli Award by the first Mexican-American Ambassador in the United States, Woman Ambassador in the United States, and she's been crucial in successful union efforts. And she is admired by many of our peers for her work ethic, her competence, her calm, her organizational skills, and her ability to build relationships. Teresa Romero, I'm so honored to have you here and welcome.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Chavez. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you today. I'm going to now, like you said, say the prayer that was written by Cesar Chavez. Show me the suffering of the most miserable, so I will know my people's life. Free me to pray for others, for your presence in every person. Help me take responsibility for my own life, so that I can be free at last. Grant me courage to serve others, for in service there's true life. Give me honesty and patience, so I can work with other workers. Bring forth sunning celebration, so that the spirit will be alive among us. Let the spirit flourish and grow, so that we will never tire of the struggle. Let us remember those who have died for justice, for they have given us life. Help us love even those who hate us, so we can change the world. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, President Romero. Thank you, Supervisor Chavez. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We now move on to item number four, which is announcements in memoriam. And item 4A is one I'm going to read in memory of our very own Chris Freitas. On Saturday, February 26th, Christopher Freitas, Senior Civil Engineer with the Santa Clara County Department of Planning and Development, passed away. Chris was active in the Transformation and Modernization, that's the TM program, operations of the department, and was passionately dedicated to the work of land development engineering. Chris was hired by the County of Santa Clara as an associate civil engineer on May 15th, 2000, when Bill Clinton was president. The worries of Y2K had safely passed. Barry Bonds became the first major league baseball player to hit a home run into San Francisco Bay, and Supervisor Semidion was serving on his first term on the County Board of Supervisors before assuming office as a state assembly member. Chris was promoted to civil engineer in August of 2004. Chris was a leader in land development engineering and would always welcome new employees by offering an afternoon cup of coffee from his very own pot. As a supervisor, Chris was a strong supporter of the engineering staff and did not hesitate to offer praise for a job well done. He was always about the team, and he frequently proclaimed, "We're all on the same team," when it was necessary to help temper interdepartmental debate. Chris kept management on its toes and was never afraid to speak his mind or offer a little bit of advice to anyone who was receptive. During his time at the county, Chris proudly served as the president of the SCC Engineers and Architects Association, the IFPT 21. He organized the department's annual holiday grazing potlucks, proudly continued Hawaiian Shirt Day Fridays, advocated for digital plan review before it became the norm, and managed the Flood Plane and Model Efficiency Landscape Ordinance Program. Chris was always ready to serve, ready to be involved. If he was given a task, he gave it his all. He owned it. Chris was a family man, married for 30 years to his wife Nanette and a graduate of Santa Clara University and former rugby player. Chris frequented Santa Clara athletic events and was a regular judge for the Senior Design Conference at the Santa Clara Engineering School. His hobbies included golfing, especially in Hawaii, photography, and fishing in both the Sierra Mountains and along the California coast. His favorite charity was the YMCA Youth Sports Program, where he was a basketball and soccer coach for 20 years. Chris will be greatly missed by his colleagues at the Santa Clara County Department of Planning and Development. On behalf of the County of Santa Clara, I extend to Chris's family and friends our sincere condolences. And I don't believe, Nancy, we have anyone from the family here. Is that correct?
I'm doing a quick check. I don't believe so.
No, thank you very much. Okay, I'm now going to move on to item five, which is commendations and proclamations. Five A's to present a commendation proclamation, declaring March 2022 as Red Cross Month in Santa Clara County. And as President of the Board, that's my honor to do so. I want to welcome Ken Torren, the CEO of the American Red Cross of Silicon Valley. Whereas more than 140 years ago, the American Red Cross was established as a humanitarian organization guided by seven fundamental principles, including humanity, impartiality, and independence, to provide services to those in need regardless of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or citizenship status. Today, the American Red Cross is one of the largest humanitarian organizations in the world and delivers its mission every day to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Whereas every year, the American Red Cross responds to an average of more than 64,000 disasters across the country. Not people, 64,000 disasters. From small home fires to local wildfires to devastating massive disasters. Hundreds of thousands of American Red Cross volunteers provide around-the-clock shelter for disaster victims, excuse me. Serve millions of meals and snacks with partners and distribute millions of relief items. During the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, the Red Cross continues to work closely with public health officials to deliver services safely and coordinate efforts with government agencies and partners. The American Red Cross is committed to helping others in meaningful ways during this pandemic, as if any of us had any doubt. Whereas in Santa Clara County, the Red Cross has a long history of helping neighbors in need. In the last year, over 2,000 local volunteers assisted with disasters and helped save lives through the Home Fire Campaign. The Red Cross stands ready to continue its mission to shelter, feed, and provide emotional support to victims of disasters, supply 40% of the nation's blood, teach skills that prepare volunteers and save lives, offer international humanitarian aid and support military members and their families. Whereas March is Red Cross Month, a special time indeed to recognize and thank the Red Cross volunteers and donors who give their time and energy to help members of the community. The Red Cross depends on these local heroes to deliver help and hope during a disaster and applaud those who assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. And whereas the county dedicates the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross's mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on volunteers and the generosity of the public to perform its mission. Now therefore, be it resolved with the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Clara, this hereby honor and proclaim the month of March as Red Cross Month, passed and adopted by the Board of Supes on this day. And with that, CEO Ken, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Wasserman, and thank you to the entire Board of Supervisors and all the staff and wonderful people in the county. And we appreciate your ongoing support of fulfilling our mission. As Supervisor Wasserman mentioned, we have five lines of service: disaster blood, preparedness, training, health and safety, international and services to the armed forces. Some of the statistics that I wanted to share with you today. And nationally, 170 times a day, we help both families affected by disasters. 1,400 times a day, we provide services to military family members. 12,500 times a day, we collect blood donations to help patients in need. And over six, close to 700,000 children receive a measles or rubella vaccination each day through worldwide partners. In Santa Clara County alone, in 2021, we assisted 250 families in 116 emergencies, and we respond to two to three home fires every single week. We collected 17,400 units of blood, and one pint of blood saves three lives. And we trained 9,000 people in first aid, CPR, AED, and water safety. We have 2,000 volunteers, 800 youth involved, 30 middle and high school Red Cross clubs. 95% of the Red Cross workforce are volunteers, and 90 cents of every dollar supports humanitarian services, making us one of the responsible organizations in the country and in the world. More than 3 million people have fled Ukraine to nearby countries, and estimated 18 million, a third of the country's population, will need humanitarian assistance. Around-the-clock teams are providing emergency aid amid fear and uncertainty. And the Red Cross, along with its partners, international partners, the IFRC, International Federation Red Cross, International Committee of Red Cross, and many other humanitarian organizations, have intensified since February, since things intensified at February 24th. We have distributed 90,000 food and hygiene parcels, supported evacuation of over 57,000 people from various towns and regions, provided 42,000 training, first aid training, provided first aid training to 42,000 people, delivered 400 tons of food, blankets, medicine, medical supplies, trauma kits, household items, assisted with evacuation of people with disabilities, supported logistic pipelines into Ukraine to ensure critical items be delivered, provided medical care at border crossings, handed out SIM cards so that families can stay connected amid all the turmoil, and pitching tents and prepared shelters for refugees who need a comforting place to sleep and to feel safe. And we will be there as long as it takes. And finally, we still have a vulnerable blood shortage in the country, throughout the country. And on March 7th, the Red Cross resumed testing all blood platelet and plasma donations for COVID-19 antibodies for a limited time. And this is able, this provides the ability for us to help COVID-19 patients with weakened immune systems. How you can help? How we can all help is to give blood, to volunteer, to donate funds, to host a blood drive, to help us find locations for blood drives throughout the county, get trained, and visit redcross.org for all the information about our wonderful organization. And again, we thank you so much for your ongoing support. We can't do it without you, and we're all in this together, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, CEO Torren. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to move on to 5B, which is a joint effort between Supervisor Chavez and myself. But before doing that, I just want to tell anybody watching who wishes to speak during item six, which is public comment, to register electronically. Doing so now will save us time later in appraising how many speakers we have for public comment. Supervisor Chavez, I'm going to turn to you now for the commendation regarding Chief Bowden.
Thank you very, very much. And Supervisor Wasserman, thank you so much for allowing me to join you with the privilege of presenting a commendation to Chief Bowden. I'm so excited to see him here. I'm actually going to get the proclamation because I have it, but you don't, Tony. Here we go. So today, Chief Bowden begins his retirement after 25 years of dedicated service to the residents of Santa Clara County. And it would be just remiss if we didn't take the time to thank and honor you. So I'm going to embarrass you a bit. Chief Tony Bowden was born and raised in Santa Clara County and began his career with County Fire in 1996. Since then, he's served in almost every capacity for County Fire. This includes his service as a firefighter engineer, paramedic, fire captain, safety officer, communication officer, training captain, battalion chief, deputy chief, and assistant chief. He served with distinction and is beloved by his colleagues and all of the members of his crew. When Chief Bowden assumed his role in 2018, his priorities included a host of infrastructure improvements as well as health and wellness for firefighters. He was instrumental in implementing critical reforms and enhancements with county's 911 Communications Department, and we are indebted to you for playing that leadership role. To protect residents and property during wildfires and other emergencies, he ensured County Fire was always at the forefront of emergency response, really advocating for state-of-the-art technology and making sure that was available to the men and women who served with them. In fact, Chief Bowden successfully guided the department through the worst wildfire season in our county's history in 2020. Given the dangers and health risks that firefighters face, Chief Bowden led efforts to help understand how to make this inherently dangerous occupation much safer. He has spent his career driven to building a healthy workforce and a strong infrastructure. Chief Bowden leaves a legacy of service that will long be admired, and it is with great pleasure that Supervisor Wasserman and I present this commendation to Chief Tony Bowden, which we'll make sure you get, to recognize and commend you for 25 years of outstanding, tireless dedication and commitment, both as a first responder, a public servant, a chief of county fire, really focused on protecting all residents. And I will say, chief, I know if your family's listening, I want them to know that every time I spoke to you, that you were always thinking about your family, and they are your source of pride, and I know you're a source of energy. And I'm honored that you're getting, I hope, more time to spend with them. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service. And on behalf of my colleagues, we are presenting this commendation to you.
There we go. And Chief Bowden, I've got a few words to say about you. Supervisor Chavez, thank you very much. And of course, all these words come from the entirety of the board. And I'm going to save my last comment just to the very end, so I don't break down again. Chief, I am privileged to present this commendation along with Supervisor Chavez and the rest of the board. After your exemplary career within our Santa Clara County Fire Department, following the steps of chiefs before him, Chief Bowden maintained his dedication to residents within our fire service area as well as with our mutual aid partners. He has prioritized a comprehensive approach to fire service, including not only fire response efforts, but fire prevention, as Supervisor Chavez mentioned. Be it roadside brush clearing or neighborhood outreach and educational efforts, Chief Bowden ensured that more people, that more people better prepare for potential fire outbreaks in the future. And as he led the County Fire Department, he kept an open line of communication with my office and many, many others, making our jobs on the Board of Supervisors far easier. We could rest assured knowing that Chief Bowden was working diligently to prepare for and respond to any event and emergency. Our chief has set another high bar for the future of the County Fire Department. Although because of his leadership, I know that we can count, continue to depend on our reliable fire crews. Speaking of reliable fire crews, I want to give a shout out again to your crew on Highway 9 that responded to a call at my mom's house and saved her life. I wish Chief Tony Bowden an amazing fire. Safe road ahead. Thank you, chief. And I see we have Vice President Ellenberg wanting to chime in, and then James Williams. Vice President.
But unmuting, there we go. Having trouble unmuting. I just want to take the opportunity as well to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and say a few more words in recognition of Chief Bowden's service and character. Most memorable for me in terms of Chief Bowden's service, Bowden's, I'm sorry, Tony, Bowden's service record is the fact that of the top 10 largest wildfires in California's history, seven of them have occurred during your tenure as chief. And County Fire has done an unbelievably amazing job responding to calls for mutual aid in each one of those dramatic events. So I'd like to say both bravo and a very heartfelt thank you to Chief Bowden. Also memorable to me is your work on the telecommunications system after significant challenges with provider services during some of those events. And thanks to your strong and effective advocacy and partnership, advocacy too, and partnership with Assembly Member Evan Low, County Fire stewards some of the most sophisticated and really just downright cool equipment in the state to maintain vital communications when cell service is otherwise incapacitated. I've had the opportunity to get to know you, chief, over the past few years and can say it has just been a pleasure to work with you. Even before I joined the board and through my first year, chief, you were welcoming. You made sure I understood the good work that people at County Fire engage in. I was invited to multiple meet and greets, training sessions, and even had the privilege of breaking bread with a bunch of you at lunch. In addition to your official service though, Tony, I want to just take a moment to reflect on your character. Even with the enormous responsibilities of your role and the difficulties of firefighting shift schedules, I know that you've always found time to contribute to your community. I hear from many of your fans that Chief Bowden will always be known for your outsized leadership and volunteer work with Branham Hills Girl Softball, where I know you coached girls, served on the board, and led field cleanup days for many years. And in my view, coaching youth in sports is so often more about character development than athletic development. And I'm grateful that those girls, including of course your own, have had the opportunity to learn about teamwork and confidence and humility, really from one of the best in our community. So I want to wish you well on your retirement, only good health going forward, and lots more sports and lots more community leadership. Thanks again, Chief Bowden.
Thank you. James Williams, County Council.
Yeah, I first, with the Board's indulgence, I'll just share just a couple of quick sentences. You know, I first got to know Tony really well when, as Deputy County Executive, I asked him to really step in at County Communications. And, you know, he did such an extraordinary job there. And, you know, from there forward, Tony, you have shown such tremendous leadership. You have been such a dedicated and devoted public servant. And most importantly, you've become just an outstanding friend. And I know that's something that'll continue, but I will miss you very much, working with you side by side on so many critical and important... Working with you side by side on so many critical and important issues. And I just wanted to add my words of appreciation for your many, many years of outstanding leadership and service to our community. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, James. Supervisor Smitty.
Thank you. Hey, Tony. As a veteran of many of our board meetings, you know that even when it really all has been said, that won't stop some of us from leaning in and saying it some more. So let me be that one today to say thank you again, both personally and professionally. And, you know, to sort of bundle together all these very specific and important examples, really, when you step away, there's only one question. Did my service make the lives of the people in the community better and safer? And your service made the lives of the people in the community better and safer. And I hope you will take that satisfaction with you as you go on to the next chapter. So thank you, both personally and professionally. And yes, it really all had been said, Mr. Chair, but I just wanted to say it again, and I wanted to say it personally, Tony. Take care.
Now, Peach is chiming in for her appreciation for the chief. Supervisor Lee.
Thank you. And I just want to say again, thank you also, Chief Bowden, for your great leadership of all these years. I haven't had the chance to work with you personally for the past year. I've been certainly been able to work with your acting chief, Brian Glass, for the past year, much closer. But at the same time, I could see from his great work, Brian's great work, that you have definitely done a great job training your subordinates to make sure that they could step in and then continue doing the great work. And of course, a lot of fire prevention work that's happening. So I just want to say thank you for all you've done for our county.
Thank you. Certainly a safe, a fire-safe road ahead for you, chief. You'll always be chief to me and a friend as well. Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
Holy smokes. I was doing a lot better until Supervisor Ellenberg brought up my girls and softball. As many of you know, I do have three daughters, and that has been a huge influence in my life and my career. And advocating for girls' sports and equity for my daughters has always been something that I've brought with me, and I'm very proud to say that we have worked diligently at County Fire to incorporate in our hiring and promotional practices. And I'm just thrilled with the leadership team that we have in place and what we were able to accomplish, although there's still a lot of work ahead. My wife reminded me that, you know, if you retired five years and now you would still have a lot of work that you would want to do, and she's right. But I also look back and I go, gosh, it was 19 years old when this kid stepped on San Jose ambulance for the first time and began his career in Santa Clara County. And 31, almost 32 years later, it's amazing how fast it went by, but I just can't express how appreciative I am to the board for your trust in me to lead. I'm appreciative to the board for your support throughout all these years. Supervisor Wasserman, you'll remember this. I use it all the time, team, the acronym team. Together, everyone achieves more. And I appreciate your words, but it was a collective team. It was a team of highly engaged leaders within the Board of Supervisors. It was a team that included executive staff at the county, and I'm going to recognize two people that probably don't get as much recognition as they deserve. But through the years, their love for this county has been very clear. And while we didn't always agree, they listened intently. And that's County Executive Jeff Smith and County Council James Williams. Your guidance and support is greatly appreciated. Again, we didn't always agree, but I have a tremendous amount of respect for both of you, for how much you've cared for the county and how much you have supported County Fire over the years. So I do want to thank you both. And then with that, because I'm getting a little bit emotional right now, I'm just going to say thank you and thank you for this this moment. It means a lot to me.
Thank you. Whether chief or coach, you're a classy guy, Tony. All the best to you. Keep it going. All righty. With that, we're going to turn to 5C, which is a proclamation that Supervisor Lee's going to deliver. And again, I'm calling out to anybody wishing to speak on public comment, which will follow this proclamation, to register now. Supervisor Lee.
Thank you, President. 5C is the presenting and proclamation declaring March 2022 as the 20th Annual March for Meals Month, and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels program. The seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them. So in March, the Health Trust Meals Program in Santa Clara County actually celebrates its 20th Annual March for Meals Month. On March 22nd, 1972, was when it started, when President Richard Nixon signed to a law, a measure that amended the Older American Acts of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years in order. Meals on Wheels America launched the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month and the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs and raise awareness about the escalating problems of senior hunger in America. The 2022 Observance of Marshall Meals celebrates 50 years of the Older Americans Act nutrition program and 20 years of providing opportunity to support Meals on Wheels program that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to join the Health Trust Meals on Wheels team to deliver a meal to one senior in Sunnyvale. And it was an amazing experience. I've done this actually back in 2006, I recall, when I was serving as mayor of this program. I'm so glad to see that this program is still going very strong, and that really touches people's life every day. In the meal kit, there's not just one meal. There's actually seven frozen meals that will actually last the senior for the entire week with nutritious fruit and also juice as well. And it's something that really is amazingly important, especially during this pandemic period that we've gone through the last three years. At this time, I read the final where asked from the resolution, where asked, "The Health Trust Meals on Wheels program has served our community admirably for more than 25 years, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors, the County of Santa Clara, thus hereby recognize and proclaim the month of March 2022 as the 20th Annual March for Meals Month, and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels program. The seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them. A recognition of involvement in the National 2022 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in our country." Congratulations. I believe Teresa Johnson from the Health Trust would like to also say a few words. Please.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Lee, and members of the Board of Supervisors for this honor for the Health Trust Meals on Wheels program. We really appreciate your ongoing support for our seniors. And again, a special thanks to you, Supervisor Lee, for visiting one of our clients. He was very, very excited about that. I would just like to briefly summarize the changes in our services since the pandemic began in March 2020. The week before the shutdown, we were serving 2,000 meals a week. Within three weeks, we were serving 9,000 meals a week. And by June, we were serving 12,000 meals a week. It was absolutely outstanding, unbelievable. We did all this by going home, getting a new phone service, all of that stuff that everybody went through. We're currently serving about 7,000 meals a week, and we will probably serve about 320,000 meals this year. We expected the demand to decline as the pandemic progressed and settled down and vaccines became available. But I want you to understand, this has not happened. About 80% of the clients who started during the pandemic still need our meals. They are elderly, they're homebound, they're very low income, and they're nutritionally at risk. We are going to lose over $1.5 million in federal COVID funding next year, leaving many of our clients at risk for losing food services. The Health Trust, however, is completely committed to serving our seniors, and we do not plan to drop any of them. I'm not sure where we're getting the money, but we're committed to this service for our community. In addition to providing frozen meal services, we're really more than a meal service. We do a wellness check on our clients, look for any obvious injuries. If they don't answer the door, we contact their emergency contact, or in some cases, the police for a welfare check. For most of our elderly clients that are really living alone, very frail, we offer a Friends on Meals Senior Social Isolization Program, where we provide in-home visits and weekly phone calls to them. The Meals on Wheels program also relies very heavily on volunteers. So over 200 volunteers provided over 7,000 hours of service last year for our Meals on Wheels program. I would just like to end with a quote from one of our clients. She's 72 years old, and she lives in Milpitas, and she lives in Lohe. Her income is $860 a month. She sent this in a Christmas card in December. "I just want to thank you for all you do. I don't know what I would do without the meals that you provide. To the ladies that answer the phone, they are always so helpful and cheerful. To the ones behind the scenes cooking and packing, you're awesome. To everyone that delivers meals, always with a smile on their faces and with warm greetings. Thank you for making so many ordinary moments extraordinary." Again, thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your support, and we look forward to working with you in the coming years.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Supervisor Lee. All right, with that, we're going to move on to item number six, which, as I mentioned before, is public comment. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak about anything not on today's agenda that comes under the purview of the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. So with that said, Nancy, I'm going to give us about 10 more seconds here. And that clinches it. We'll be one minute each for speakers. And again, speakers, you are speaking about something not on today's agenda. Go right ahead, Nancy.
First speaker is Suzanne. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute, and you will have one minute to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Suzanne, and I'm a registered nurse at Valley Medical Center for 12 years. I was placed on leave February 1st due to my religious beliefs and the mandated vaccination. This has caused a great deal of anxiety and depression and financial hardship for both me and my family. I was frontline when we didn't know anything about COVID. As I said, I was in the emergency department. We all stepped up in the face of danger to take care of our community. I isolated myself from my family for months to keep them safe, and it's unbelievable that we're being disregarded because of our religious beliefs. Last week, two weeks ago at the board meeting, Jeff Smith was advised to create a plan to get nurses back. I don't see it on the agenda. Please, County Board of Supervisors, address this and get the nurses back to work. Also, we are not being accommodated. Not one nurse has been accommodated, as opposed to the comments from Jeff Smith.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Delilah Pulido. I am muting you. Please accept the unmute. You have one minute to speak.
An article was written in the Mercury News regarding comments made by the Board of Supervisors that high-risk employees were going to be able to return to work. At the March 7th board meeting, Wasserman stated workers in high-risk positions would be able to return to work. There was also a newsletter that went out from Cindy Chavez stating that instead individuals who are not fully vaccinated and work in those settings who receive a medical religious exemption will be required to get regular testing either once or twice a week, depending on where they work and where appropriate face coverings while at work. What Cindy Chavez said in the newsletter does align with the state, but that's not what's happening. The county is not following this guideline. The county wants to still hold on to the risk-tier system and deem positions too high risk. Yet healthcare professionals were allowed to keep working after testing positive for COVID-19. We are tired of all the hypocrisy. The workers that have been on unpaid leave since 11/21 all have religious or medical exemptions, yet no one has contacted them about returning. Instead, they have all been getting contradicting information.
Our next speaker is Jessica. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Jessica Cuevas, and I, hello, my name is Jessica Cuevas, and I work at both Elmwood and Main Jail as a cook, too. I am also SEIU 521 Stewart. I'm here to talk about the short staffing in the Sheriff's Department Food Service Division. We have continued to rearrange our schedules every day in order to accommodate the needs of the department as well as for the feeding times for the inmates. Again, we are being asked, we are being told that we have to change our schedules. But the reality is, with over 20% vacancy rates, it is not the schedule that is the issue. It's the lack of staffing. Cooks are only being provided three hours to prepare meals, while the standard is four. During the three hours time constraint, cooks are being called to complete the duties of the food service worker as well as completing their task. We're asking the Board of Supervisors to demand that the department work with us to ensure that the cooks have time to be given to cook and that the department works with us to keep the vacancies on a continuous post.
Our next speaker is Alan Kamara. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Alan Kamara. I want to just come to you and plead, plead on behalf of our nurses. You all just heard Suzanne spoke very eloquently about their, what's going on with some of our nurses at home. We are asking the county, why do we have this different tier system when El Camino, O'Connor, El Camino, Stanford, and Kaiser can accept nurses who have religious exemption to come to work and do their job? And we all live within the same community. But yet, the County of Santa Clara cannot allow their nurses to come back to work at Valley Medical, O'Connor, and San Luis, Main Jail, and other places. I am pleading to the county, please do not let Dr. Smith force our nurses to lose their job. I'm pleading to you all, please, please. Thank you.
Next speaker is Erish Kumarmeta. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Thank you very much, Board of Supervisors. I wanted to mention about the Afghanistan recapation, as well as the situation in Ukraine. It is important to, that as the County of Santa Clara is equally having a participant to a government operations and federal advocacy, it is important that to note here that how the different people within the County of Santa Clara from from the Russian counterpart and as well as from the Afghanistan counterpart are going through the situation. And also to consider the putting up the right set of sanction and as well as establishing establishing the relations accordingly and adherence to the federal advocacy, as it is important to maintain that nature rather than rather than considering to complete the resources that is not required to be acquired at this particular point. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Christina Lopez. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Christina Lopez. I'm confused about the Santa Clara COVID health orders for March 8th. It says that unvaccinated employees in high-risk settings can return to work, but that wasn't true. I don't think it's fair that unvaccinated employees are treated differently. Is there any evidence that unvaccinated people can, that unvaccinated people can track COVID or spread it? Because vaccinated people also can track COVID and spread it. Please stop treating people differently. Let our workers return to work. I'm sure receptionists, counselors, social workers are not a threat to the world, and our nurses are the safest people in the hospitals. They treat their patients safely, and they are safe for themselves. Please allow them to return to work. Please allow everybody to work and just follow safety guidelines. This is enough already.
Next speaker is Sharon Luna. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good morning. I hope that you have read Smane's and Supervisor Wasserman's emails regarding SIMPAC. Good morning. I hope that you have read SMNA's and Supervisor Wasserman's emails regarding SIMPAC. Let me be clear, SMNA would never have moved forward if Supervisor Wasserman in writing said that the South County Joint Planning Advisory Committee was not our form of communication. It was SIMPAC. We received emails from Gilroy Morgan Hill residents that were upset with our decision to go with SIMPAC and not the South County JPAC. I will agree and thank Supervisor Chavez Chavez for setting meeting up but was on another issue, not the airport. However, it was a great meeting, but not a community meeting. What was not mentioned is that established that San Martin has not had meetings and continued meetings that you all voted on. Please review general plans, SIMPAC bylaws, and ordinance for the decision to approve. SMNA's proposal is up to the SIMPAC Committee and Board of Supervisors. All we're asking for is a meeting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bren Perez. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi, first of all, at the last board meeting, it was mentioned that the new health order will allow employees to request exemptions and were placed on unpaid administrative leave to return to work. To this day, county employees have not been contacted to be reinstated, but instead continue to receive conflicting information from the department's union representatives and labor relations. Can the Board of Supervisors please clarify when the county employees that remain on unpaid leave will be allowed to go back to work? We urge the Board of Supervisors to help us clarify the confusion. Is this how we will continue to pay it forward to those who risk their lives for our community and who we once called our heroes for doing so? The Board of Supervisors need to stop being idle and must stand up and take action against injustice in our community heroes. The, our heroes are facing. Our community demands and deserves answers. It's about time to get them. Thanks for your time.
Our next speaker is Rosie Moreno. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. Rosie, you may begin.
Hi. So again, reiterating the sentiments of many, to date, the county does not align with state health orders. The county health order modified in March for those who work in high-risk settings have, haven't seen any of these changes implemented. The Board of Supervisors and the county executives unfortunately are all talk and no action. County workers have reached out to their union representatives, to the Labor Relations Departments, and continue to receive conflicting information. As of November 1st, 2021, we continue to be on unpaid admin leave. When will the confusion end? When will those involved be held liable? When will our community go back to business as usual? The question that is most important to all of us, when will county employees who have worked through this pandemic be allowed to return to work and be in the same predicament as everyone under, under the state of California where you can go to work and you test twice a week and you wear your mask? So those are the
Next speaker is Rebecca Voss. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hello, I would like to say that I am speaking from unseated, aloney ground. My name is Rebecca and I am a Deans College student living and working in District 1. I'm here to speak on the Sergeant Ranch Quarry Project. The draft environmental impact report for this project is scheduled for release on April 8th, but I would like to urge you to vote no on the quarry regardless of the findings of the DEIR. As participants in a system of colonial oppression, it is our duty to respect the wishes of our indigenous community members. Building a quarry on Ammotsen Sacred Ground, Eurostock, would irreparably damage the county's relationship with the local indigenous community and would undoubtedly have negative environmental impacts. Not building a quarry will always be the most environmentally conscious option regardless of the findings of an environmental impact report. I thus sincerely urge you all to think about whether this quarry would truly be beneficial for your constituents or if this is simply a grab for money by a corporation in what is already a wealthy county. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Pierre Luigi Oliverio. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Adobe was contacted by one of the largest Santa Clara County departments who was having difficulty in achieving basic daily work functions based on the limitations of the DocuSign software. Adobe provided a live workshop and demonstrated how Adobe would resolve their bottleneck. Adobe is both the largest employer in downtown San Jose and the largest processor of electronic signatures globally. Adobe is also a great philanthropic partner to our community, awarding $5 million in grants locally during the pandemic to organizations such as Destination Home, Second Harvest Food Bank, the Community Foundation, and scholarships for disadvantaged youth for college. A lot has changed since the inception of the current Santa Clara County contract, as exemplified by organizations moving away from legacy DocuSign to Adobe. Such organizations with over 100,000 employees whose use cases are more complex than the county and in dozens of languages. These organizations could not tolerate a moment of downtime. They wanted to reduce risk from companies who are financially unstable, lower internal administrative costs.
Our next speaker is Erin. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I have a question to all the Board of Supervisors and Sarah Cody. What data is being used to justify continued treatment of unvaccinated employees as if they're constantly sick or a danger to the community? I think we can all see that as, as of today and for quite some time now, that there is no difference between unvaccinated employees and vaccinated employees. Both can transmit, both can contract, and both can die whether you're vaccinated or not. What is the end game? What is the goal? I think unvaccinated employees deserve to know the answer to this. Is it one year of testing twice a week? Is it one year of being masked while everybody else is unmasked? There's no, there is, there's nothing to prove that we're a danger to the community. And I think, I think we deserve answers because no one's willing to give those. So we want to know when this will end, and that means everything, testing, masking, everything. That's all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Milan Ballington. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. Milan, I see that you unmuted and then muted yourself again. Can you unmute yourself? He seems to have lowered his hand. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to move on to item seven, Nancy, which is approval of the consent calendar and changes to be, changes to the Board of Supervisors. We have a printed out consent calendar update, Nancy, that I'll need you to read from. And item number 17, both I and another supervisor are requesting remains on the regular agenda. Nancy, please go ahead.
There was a request from Supervisor Semidian to add item numbers 15 and 17 to the consent calendar. Item number 15 is to approve referral to administration and county council to report to the board on May 24th, 2022 with options for consideration relating to a work, return to work program for experienced workers seeking to return to the workforce after taking time away from the paid workforce to care for children or other dependents. Item number 17 is to adopt resolution affirming the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. There was a request from Supervisor Lee to add item number 19 to the consent calendar. Item 19 is to approve county sponsorship of the Alma Den Valley Women's Club in the amount of $5,000 from the supervisory district one and supervisory district five allocations in the office of the Clerk of the Board fiscal year 2021-2022 budget to support the July 4th Family Fireworks Festival at Alma Den Lake Park. There was a request from Supervisor Lee and Supervisor Semidian to add item number 20 to the consent calendar. Item number 20 is to approve county sponsorship of child advocates of Silicon Valley in the amount of $3,500 from the supervisory district two allocation in the office of the Clerk of the Board fiscal year 2020-21 to 2022 budget to support the Broadway Bound Gala on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022. There was a request from Supervisor Lee to add item number 21 to the consent calendar. Item number 21 is to approve county sponsorship of child advocates of Silicon Valley in the amount of $1,000 from the supervisory district five allocation in the office of the Clerk of the Board fiscal year 2021-2022 budget to support Broadway Bound Gala. There was a request from Supervisor Semidian to add item number 23 to the consent calendar. Item number 23 is to approve county sponsorship of Recovery Cafe in the amount of $1,000 from the supervisory district three allocation in the office of the Clerk of the Board fiscal year 2021-2022 budget to support the Closing the Gap Breakfast. There is a request from Supervisor Lee to add item number 30 to the consent calendar. Item number 30 is to approve an opposed position on the proposed state trailer bill language authorizing the California Department of Healthcare Services to enter into a direct, no-bid, comprehensive risk contract with Peja Permanente to serve as a primary medical managed care plan. There is a request from Supervisor Semidian to hold item number 32 to date uncertain. Item number 32 is to approve memorandum of understanding with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority regarding housing opportunities for period February 8th, 2022 through February 8th, 2031. There is a request from Supervisor Lee to hold item number 33 to April 19th, 2022. Item number 33 is to receive report relating to a collaborative motel placement program. There was a request from President Wasserman to consider item numbers 34 and 35 concurrently. Item number 34 is the adoption of ordinance number NS-300.954, amending chapter 18 of Division A6 of the Santa Clara County Ordinance Code relating to the County of Santa Clara Moscow Sister County Commission. Item number 35 is to consider recommendations relating to termination of the sister county city relationship with the governments of Moscow. There is a request from Supervisor Lee to add item number 36 to the consent calendar. Item number 36 is to consider recommendations relating to a study of the potential for park and open space use of the county fairgrounds. There is a request from administration to hold item numbers 37, 38, and 39 to April 19th, 2022. Item number 37 is to receive report relating to the development of a care plan, including the development of community services that reduce client contact with the criminal justice system and facilitate other options for jail diversion and reentry services. Item number 38 is to receive report relating to resource requirements and options that address housing and self-sufficiency for human trafficking survivors and the salaries and staffing issues for advocates. Item number 39 is to receive report relating to lead screening of youth in juvenile hall in William F. James Ranch. There is a request from the district attorney to hold item number 40 to April 19th, 2022. Item number 40 is to receive report relating to addressing the increase in prevalence of online commercial sex ads, substance use among survivors, the intersection with human trafficking, and salaries and staffing for the law enforcement investigating human trafficking 2.0 task force to further investigate and respond to these developing trends. And that concludes the consent calendar update.
Thank you, Nancy. I will now turn to supervisors for any comments, additions. Supervisor, Vice President Ellenberg, you raising your hand? No, you aren't. Supervisor Chavez.
Sorry, my, my meeting is very delayed today. So, thank you. I just want to clarify something that I may have missed in that review. Is the, is the item regarding the Ukrainian resolution on, on consent, or was it moved back to the regular agenda?
Items 34 and 35 are being held together. And Supervisor, need clarification? It remains on the agenda? Supervisor Lee?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear my name. Yes, definitely. Still on the agenda. We just want to hurt it together. We're not moving to consent.
Not on consent. Okay. Okay, thank you. Then I will hold comments there.
Thank you.
But I did have a few others. The, sorry, just also confirming that Supervisor Chavez has held item 49. Sometimes this does go so quickly. If so, I just, I want to support the, the hold of that item until the April 5th board meeting. Item 49 is to approve a request for appropriation modification, increasing revenues and expenditures in the Santa Clara Valley Medical Hospital, Medical Center Hospital Clinics budget relating to an augmentation of revenue cycle staff. And I know that this requires a four-fifths vote. And we've heard some concerns from our employees around this, and I would appreciate if staff could address the following issues in the interim. The return of, of employees who participated in the VSIP, the Voluntary Separation Incentive Program. Concerns regarding capacity issues at the frontline staff level and certainly ensuring that our labor partners' concerns regarding all of this are heard and addressed.
Excuse me, Vice President Ellenberg, were you asking the Supervisor Chavez was holding 49? Or were you making comments about 49 and leaving it on consent?
Happy to be, I was getting tangled again. I'm happy to leave it on consent. Those are my comments on consent.
Okay, thank you.
Right? It's, it's rough this morning. Items 51 and 52, this is the addition of positions for the Youth Center for Evaluation and Advocacy that was previously reviewed at CFSC. I am supportive of this action and want to appreciate the staff work to date, especially with regard to external partners. I was pleased to see the addition, new since our CFSC report of the contract with Parents Helping Parents for the Service Navigation and Family Support Element. I, I really believe that this service navigation work is, is really one of the most challenging and critical elements of the program and would like the next report at CFSC to detail the plans for the service navigation model and the roles of clinic staff, Parents Helping Parents, and external partners, including regional centers and schools with the, with the support, hoped for support of the chair. I'll certainly leave it to the chair to schedule. But would appreciate an April or May report ahead of the planned opening of the center in July. Item 56 is the addition of 49 public health positions through grant funds to support long-term COVID response and department infrastructure. Again, I'm, I'm supporting these positions as well as the additions in BMC and OES in the last few meetings, but as they raised at the last meeting during the COVID report, they do expect to see a written plan to come back to the Board of Supervisors prior to the budget that provides detail on the ongoing strategies, the baseline capacity levels, the roles of local system partners, and any projection of baseline funding levels to maintain core capacities in surveillance, testing, vaccination, outreach, et cetera. The addition of positions, I obviously support such a plan, but the board and the public should absolutely receive a clear roadmap of what activities and expenditures we should expect for the coming fiscal year. And just on a related note regarding the FGOC report at number 70, I want to reiterate the importance of continued board visibility into the costs and reimbursements related to the COVID pandemic. We all know that we have spent over a billion dollars on the COVID response to date. Estimates from our finance department suggest that we'll be spending another 300 to 600 million. So I will be eager to see this topic continue to be presented on future FGOC agendas as it pleases the committee. Just a couple more. President Wasserman. Just faster than pulling them off of consent. On 71, this is the budget modification for Supervisor Chavez's referral related to tutoring for children of African-American descent. I want to thank procurement and the leadership at Bay Area Tutoring Association for working out the details on how to add the contract for that organization. And I want to reiterate here my request that this funding be changed from a one-time, now it's two-time board request to ongoing funding in the budget. So I'd like to request an off-agenda report from administration before February 2023 as to how we can make that happen. Finally, I think finally, 86E. This commendation brought forward by my office highlights some really outstanding artists in the Santa Clara County community, and it's particularly appropriate during women's and it's particularly appropriate during Women's History Month to share some of the beautiful and powerful work of these individuals. The original focus of the group was to highlight women uh and people who were marginalized in the art world, and it's evolved to a group that teaches and creates and writes and works with the community. And I encourage anyone that has time to check out their books, uh Creating Power, Staying Visible, The Importance of Archives and Roots and Offshoots. I want to thank Jan Rein Fleisch for your assistance with the commendation and your dedication to the art community in Santa Clara County. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Chavez?
Thank you very much. Um, first, I I want to go to item sixty-one. And this is um premium pay rates for employee and retiree medical health. I'd like to request an off-agenda report from ESA um on discussions with health plan representatives for their compliance with Senate Bill twenty twenty, I'm sorry, Senate Bill two hundred and twenty-one. And this is intended to reduce mental health care wait times. And um I saw a significant um lag in our our insurance company's ability to respond to a number of of cases. We're getting calls to our office regarding that. Um, item eighty is a report back on nitrous oxide. I'd like to ask that be deferred till April fifth. It can be kept on consent, but I have a little bit more research I would like to do. Item ninety-one is the hospital master plan. I'm very excited that there will be community outreach on this and really appreciate very much working with the board offices. I think that impacts Supervisor Ellenberg probably most of all. Um, what I'd like to ask is that at our um first meeting in August that we have a presentation on what the community will be seeing so that we're better able to um understand what the staff is sharing with the with the public. And thank you again to staff for working on that uh master plan. Items forty-nine and fifty, I'd like to defer to April fifth to get the questions answered that Supervisor Ellenberg raised. And um in addition, what I would like to ask is that there be a discussion with the um line staff to review what will be coming to the board on April fifth. Um, items fifty and fifty-one, these are um uh items that Supervisor Ellenberg just touched on. And on items fifty and fifty-one, I just wanted to say to the staff, I'm very, very excited about how this is moving forward. Um, I see that the time has also moved from um July to August. And my my presumption is that that's just really wanting to make sure we do a good job on the launch. I would like to make sure that the um that this item come back to Children's Families Seniors Committee uh prior to the August launch, just so that again, we're um in the loop about how this is proceeding and who the partners are that ultimately be um assisting us. This is really exciting. This is the Child uh Diagnostic Center. They give it a better name than that, but it's really the opportunity for us to screen even more children and and be able to anticipate what their needs are at a much, much younger age.
Supervisor Chavez, if I may for clarification, you said you wanted to hold forty-nine and fifty, and you were just now speaking about fifty-one?
Fifty and fifty-one.
You're speaking about fifty and fifty-one, but you're not holding fifty-one. You're holding forty-nine and fifty.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a second.
Any others? Dr. Smith, go ahead, then Supervisor Lee.
Forty-nine and fifty are being held, and fifty-one and fifty-two were the comment.
Fifty and fifty-one were the comments. That's correct. And forty-nine and fifty would be held till April fifth.
Dr. Smith said fifty-two. Supervisor Chavez?
Sorry, fifty-one and fifty-two are the youth activities. I apologize. I was making comments on fifty-one and fifty-two. And forty-nine and fifty, I'm asking to be deferred till April fifth.
All right, okay. I just wanted to be sure.
No, thanks for catching that, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Supervisor Chavez, anything more?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lee?
Thank you. Um, on the uh various items, on item number thirty-three, uh initially, uh I have asked to uh have it moved to April nineteenth. I would like to have this move up to the April fifth meeting due to uh some scheduling changes. Um, first, I just want to thank the Office of Supportive Housing for the good work on this report back to us. I'm also requesting the deferral to April fifth so that there's staff can come back with some additional information I've requested uh to make the report a bit more complete uh to move forward. On item number fifty-eight, uh I would like to make a comment on the ILEP, which is the Independent Living Apartment Program uh that the peer support services should be monitored uh during the contract term to ensure that peer support staff hired by the Community Health uh Improvement Partners will be actively involved in all-level support. Um, and uh there have been some words that they were used only for administrative taskers, and that, of course, appeared peer support's vital to success of this program. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Semidion?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. On item nineteen, which is on consent, happy to leave that on consent. I did just want to clarify for the record because I got a question about it. The five thousand dollar allocation is split evenly, twenty-five hundred dollars from District One, your district, and twenty-five hundred dollars from District Five, my district. So it's a total of five thousand, twenty-five hundred from each district, and would ask the clerk to make sure that that's uh clear in our minutes, please. On item number thirty, which is the uh Kaiser Permanente uh matter, uh, I would like to uh ask that we hear that and and it's regularly scheduled place on the agenda. I think uh frankly, uh whatever our views may be, uh we would all benefit from having a uh a public conversation about uh what the issues are there. So again, that's a request to have item number thirty remain in its regular place on the agenda. Uh, on item number thirty-six, the fairgrounds item, which has been placed on consent, fine uh to do that, but um I will uh register an abstention on item thirty-six. And again, for the clerk, that's an abstention on item thirty-six. And I I would just like to say, uh, Ms. Chair, my my reasoning there is uh I I look forward to seeing what the study provides, but um I think FMC has been taking a fairly ad hoc piecemeal approach uh to advancing redevelopment on the site. Uh, and the ideas they're bringing forward end up locking up large parcels of land for, you know, in some cases, many decades, and um the parakeet revenues, while probably better than the current situation, are not uh particularly compelling. In fairness to FMC, I think, you know, this, we've fallen into this habit because, excuse me, neither the board or county staff have been able to build consensus around a really comprehensive, long-term plan for the site. And so I I understand that. Uh, and if the study uh ends up generating uh a longer-term uh vision, uh that'll be a benefit. But uh in the meantime, I'll be an abstention. I'll also abstain on item number eighty-nine. This is a uh item that I've discussed with our board before uh involving essentially cell phone towers, uh AT&amp;T, uh Mobility Corporation uh in a agreement with roads and airports. I I do want to thank staff for their efforts to uh improve the situation somewhat. I think we do have a better situation now with respect to the ability of uh concerned residents to contact someone and uh hopefully actually reach someone who can address their concerns, answer their questions. Uh, I am, however, troubled by the fact that we still don't really have uh any great clarity, certainty, or control over uh how many of these uh and where they will be. Uh, and I know staff gave it their best shot. Uh, and I want to say thanks again for that. But again, I'll be an abstain. So the short short version is clarifying on number nineteen, twenty-five hundred dollars from each of the two districts. On item number thirty, let's leave it on the agenda, please. And I will abstain on thirty-six and eighty-nine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you to the clerk who has to keep track of all this.
Thank you, Nancy, and I'll make the shorter version that um I and Supervisor Lee, we would like to hear, item number seventeen. And I will recuse myself on item eighty-nine as well because of my financial interest in AT&amp;T. Nancy, do you believe you have everything you need?
I do. Thank you.
Well, you are super. All right. So with that, I see that we have one speaker. Let's let the one speaker speak on um the consent items and for three minutes.
Hey. One minute here. First speaker is Delmi Fry. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute. You have three minutes to speak. The timer will start when you begin speaking.
Okay, okay. I've never done this before, so I'm terrified. Um, the result is what's happening at the moment is they're trying to uh dumb down the requirements for a macroom operator so that they can justify what they pay us. In reality, we have not been, we have been seeking a realignment, and we have been turned down repeatedly because nobody, nobody does our job. Nobody monitors rights work orders, uh does emergency response from the macroom, my uh handles fires, handles um power outages, et cetera. Uh, GM ones have been realigned six times, GM twos have been realigned seven times, GM threes have been realigned eight times over the last forty-five years. BSMs have never been realigned because there are no job specs that match ours entirely. Now, we came up with the um with the um communication. Oh, God, we can't find what I want. Communication Dispatch One, we matched their job spec ninety-two point five percent. Union said that was close enough. We went in, ESA turned us down. Um, the reality of life is that we do do what they do. We just have a different focus. Their focus is life safety, and our focus is building, building safety. And um whereas they have three people to respond to, fire, medical, and and police, we have seventeen seventeen different trades to respond to and to know about and to be able to write work orders that get them to the right place at the right, you know, efficiently and knowing what's happening. And uh the the reality is that if we were realigned where we used to be, or even just above a GM two, there would be GM twos that wanted to come in the macroom. As it is, because they're paid four dollars and seventy-one cents an hour more than us, they're not interested in being BSMs. They're not interested in applying for it. But uh if they paid us a reasonable wage, we would be okay. And they've have, and the, and dumbing down the job specs is not a way of improving the quality that the macroom provides to the county. I don't know what else to say. So I guess that's it.
Thank you. And Nancy, before you go to the next speaker, we will give the next speaker three minutes, but um by our rules printed in our agenda, the consent calendar is limited to two minutes. So this person will have three. If any others join us, it'll be two. Go ahead.
Our next speaker is Ervish Kumar Mehta. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Uh, thank you very much, Board of Supervisors. Uh, well, uh, as you know, we are, as you know, the item is submitted to consent calendar uh agent items. I want to speak about the agent item thirty-four and thirty-five, which is part of the current situation. I think it would be important to emphasize on that, you know, what uh as an as an holistic approach, that you know, what section has been applied as a part of a financial, as well as gas, oil, and as well as country and country relationship dialogues within the new country as a part of uh as a part, as a part of a department states policy, and as well as regulatory policy in terms of the side area there. It is important to evaluate that how those sanctions are going to be impacting the the daily lives of citizens within the county of Santa Clara and as well as the diversification and economic development within the county of Santa Clara, such that, you know, any policies in terms of a termination or any policy in terms of a change would require of uh would require advocacy and as well the recommendations to be considered from all respective uh Board of Supervising, and also to consider that you know what, as in country system is taking and uh taking an action in terms of uh in terms of a country step, what involves the situation.
Hello, everyone. Uh, good afternoon. As you can see, things are changing and moving.
Hold on just one second here. Please stop this time, Nancy.
We've had.
Whoever has their microphone on right now, so we're getting that background noise, please shut it off. All right, Nancy, let's try that again.
I'm sorry about that. Um, so it is important to address the current situation, and so would the current situation. However, it is important that the citizens within the city of within the county of Santa Clara would not be deprived of the decision that has been taken under the MOU. They are continued to be taken care by the county of Santa Clara. Thank you very much for consideration of comments, and thank you for uh, thank you for allowing.
Thank you, Ervish.
That concludes our public comment.
All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on to item eight. We're going to hear from Consuelo.
My apologies. Uh, can I get a motion?
Excuse me. Thank you very much. We need a motion to approve all that we said previously, of which Nancy captured everything.
Would you like me to summarize that just in case?
I really don't, but we should. Go right ahead.
Okay, um, on consent, we have fifteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, thirty-six. We have a hold for item numbers thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-nine, fifty, and eighty. And thirty-four and thirty-five will be held, considered concurrently. Sorry, not held. We have abstentions for thirty-six and eighty-nine, and a recusal on eighty-nine.
Thank you. We need that motion back again. Vice President Ellenberg, did I hear from you?
You did. Motion stands.
All right, and who seconded? Supervisor Chavez?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please, Nancy.
Supervisor Lee?
Hi.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Wasserman?
Yes. Thank you, Nancy. Now move on to item eight, which is time certain. Have you heard no earlier than ten? It's uh ten fifty-two, so we meet that. It is a public hearing regarding the purchase of real property located at one-five, four-four-zero Monterey Road in Morgan Hill. I'm going to begin this by opening the public hearing and receiving testimony if we have any. Looks like we have one.
Yes.
Okay, let's allow that person two minutes.
Our speaker is Alex Shore. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Alex Shore here. I'll be speaking later in a personal capacity. Right now, I'm here on behalf of Catalyze SV and our members who score development projects throughout Santa Clara County. Want to thank the Office of Supportive Housing and the county for continuing to aggressively pursue affordable housing and doing so in a creative way by purchasing properties and matching with affordable housing developers to build on them. I think it's a a great way to do it and a testament to the continued strength of Measure A. We are excited on May second to be hosting an educational event, thanks to Supervisor Otto Lee, in which we'll be highlighting a lot of the Measure A projects throughout the county and the impact that Santa Clara County's housing is having on affordable housing, thanks to Measure A. As you continue to look at projects like the four that you're going to be hopefully approving today, we continue to invite and encourage the county to emphasize and support those projects that maximize the number of homes on the site. Catalyze SV members are continuing to see affordable housing developers choose to build less homes than they could on projects, not because of construction costs, but because of concerns of limited pockets of community fears on the development. And we just don't think that that's the best reason to not build as many homes as possible on a site. Another being emphasizing parking. We think that the number of homes should be the most important priority, and parking should take second fiddle. So please continue to talk with the Office of Supportive Housing about supporting projects that maximize the number of affordable homes, especially if it is public land we're purchasing. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers, Nancy.
Yes, it does.
Thank you. So I'm now going to close the public hearing. And we have staff on standby, but other than that, I'll look. Thank you. So I'm now going to close the public hearing and we have staff on standby, but other than that, I'll look for a motion.
Chavez, move approval.
Thank you. Supervisor Lee, do you want to second that and then speak?
Yes, I'll second it and speak after this.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I know these are the type of projects, that's exactly what we need. The use of Measure A funding is great. And in this case, we actually have a purchasing a, a land, an empty land to, to do this. And I just would like to say that these are the exact project we want. Right now, it's planned for seventy-three unit of affordable family development, including eighteen rapid rehousing. And also, very specifically, it's got thirty units minimum for agricultural worker households, which is of course extremely important in the area of Morgan Hill. I do want to say that the seventy-three unit, I would like to use that as a minimum. And I certainly would love to have, after the purchase, to see if there's any opportunity to make it higher density so that more affordable family units could be built in that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands. We have a motion. We have a second roll call vote, please, Nancy.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item nine, another public hearing. We've, we're starting after the time that we had to wait until. And I'm going to open the public hearing. Nancy, I don't see anyone waiting to speak, do you?
No, I do not.
I will then close the public hearing and I'll turn to my fellow supervisors for a motion regarding this property located at twenty-one North Twenty-first Street.
Move approval.
Supervisor Chavez moves approval. Supervisor Lee seconded. Seeing no other hands raised. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now move on to agenda item number ten, purchase of real property located at thirty-three thirty-five through thirty-three thirty-seven Khyfer Road in Santa Clara. I am going to open the public hearing, Nancy, with your assistance. I don't see any speakers. Do you agree?
I agree.
Thank you. I'm now going to close the public hearing and turn to my illustrious supervisors for a motion or comments.
I, I'm happy to make a motion. I have a comment, but I'm having another technical issue here, if you could just.
Thank you. We have Vice President Ellenberg making the motion, Surowa Chavez the second, and back to Vice President Ellenberg for her comments.
Thank you so much. I just want to hear, appreciate Consuelo and their staff for their efforts in developing this project. I want to thank Allied Housing for their partnership in building affordable and permanent supportive units. Really glad to see that D4 in the city of Santa Clara will be home to some additional affordable housing for seniors and low-income households with seniors. The eighty, eighty new apartments will move our county closer to our goal of ending homelessness, and I'm really eager to welcome the, welcome residents as they move into the units. I do have just a single request going forward for all of these reports to the Office of Housing. I'd like to, Office of Supportive Housing, I'd like us to require that developers either provide a quarter or bi-annual update on community engagement so that we can share those, so that those can be shared in off-agenda reports to the Board of Supervisors without asking for additional analysis by the Office of Supportive Housing. Does, can, Consuelo, can you speak to that? Is it, is the reasoning clear? I just want to make sure that
She's unmuted.
that the supervisors are always up to date on what the communication plans are for each project, you know, ideally without adding work for you.
Yes, thank you Supervisor. We are working with our development partners to come up with a standard report that they would each submit and that we have it upon request.
Right. Upon request, meaning we need to remember to ask for them or they'll be sent to the, the board off-agenda as they are received from the developers.
One idea is to include it as part of the item whenever it comes back to the board, particularly because in this case you, the board has taken action on these four developments, you know, as three years ago or in August last year, so it is hard to remember and keep track. And so we're working on including that as part of the item for your consideration, but then also just as part of our community engagement strategy, having that report come into our office as a standard.
Terrific. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call vote, please, Nancy.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Wasserman?
Yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to item eleven, another public hearing regarding the purchase of property located at eleven thirty-five East Santa Clara Street in San Jose. We are now going to open the public hearing and receive testimony. Looks like we have one speaker, Nancy. Would you please allow he or she two minutes?
Alex Shore, I'm unmuting you. Please unmute to begin speaking.
Good morning again. This is Alex Shore with Catalyze SV. Wasn't planning on speaking on a second item, but Supervisor Ellenberg, you just said some magic words to our ears about community engagement and we appreciate that. I'm sure that report will be helpful to the supervisors and it's also helpful to the public to understand how developers in the Office of Supportive Housing are doing community engagement. We have, as you may guess or know, a lot of opinions on how to create a great transparent feedback loop, which is to reflect what the developers and the county heard through the community engagement process and how they're being responsive to the community. So as always, would say to the supervisors and to Consuelo and the Office of Supportive Housing, if we can be helpful on that, our goal is always to create an inclusive, transparent, collaborative community engagement process that builds greater trust in government as you build great, important buildings and including affordable housing. So we always recommend, as one of those principles, to let the community know what you heard through the community engagement process and how the developer has or has not been able to implement those ideas that kind of came from the community. And that's a key principle for building trust. So if we can be of any service as you're designing those quarterly reports that Supervisor Ellenberg is requesting, we'd love to just provide a little input in that process. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And with that, and no more speakers in the queue, I'm going to close our public hearing and look for a motion.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, we have a motion by Chavez, a second by Ellenberg. No other further discussion?
Actually, may I just make one quick?
Yes, please Supervisor Chavez.
Yeah, thank you. I, I really wanted to just acknowledge Santa Clara, Morgan, and Morgan Hill and San Jose because you know, the, the land use decision really goes to the cities and I, I'm really appreciative that they're being so you know, frankly collaborative with the county. And I, I do just want to acknowledge that Consuelo and her whole team really deserve our thanks. They are moving so much faster than anybody imagined and, and during really tough times. So I just wanted to share both gratitude, but also to the three cities that are stepping up.
Super good comments. Thank you very much. All right, with that, Nancy, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Pardon me, aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Wasserman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to agenda item twelve, which was to be heard no earlier than ten-thirty. It's four minutes after eleven, so we meet that criteria. And we should have Rosio Luna, our Deputy County Executive, right there. I see her.
Good morning.
Thank you. Please go ahead with your opening comments, Rosio.
Great. Good morning, President Wasserman and members of the board, Rosio Luna, Deputy County Executive. With me this morning is Dr. Lisa Harp with DCI Consulting. She'll be providing all of us with a status update on the development of a pay equity strategic plan for our county. And we have a short PowerPoint that we will load shortly.
Let me just say, thank you for providing that PowerPoint in advance. I appreciate the time to be able to look it over.
Thank you. Should be loading shortly.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Harp. I'm a industrial organizational psychologist and a principal consultant at DCI Consulting based out of Washington DC, although I'm in Raleigh, North Carolina. And I am part of a team that is working with the county of Santa Clara to work on this initiative. And so I did just want to give you an update and share a little bit of information with you. You can go to the next slide. So big picture, just a reminder of the statement of work, and I know there are a lot of other pieces to this, but kind of the overall picture is that we'll be providing expert consulting services to the county regarding pay equity, including a review of pay and hiring data and a real focus on identifying, understanding disparities in pay based on sex or gender. And they'll also be analyzing data, gathering it, providing information to help us make recommendations and implement really a strategic plan around pay equity practices in the workforce. Next slide. And before I get into really a lot of what we've done, I did want to kind of have a little bit of a conversation about how I've seen pay equity changes, state, how pay equity studies have changed over time. So I've been in this field for a little over twenty years and primarily doing the analysis of employment data for evidence of discrimination. When I started my career, it was primarily adverse impact studies of hiring data. Within, in the last ten years, it is almost exclusively pay equity. And so we've seen a real evolution of employers really becoming more and more interested in this topic. When I first started doing pay studies, the emphasis was really on legal compliance. So it was based on employee complaining and filing complaint. Were federal contractors complying with their regulatory requirements? So it was very narrowly focused on that legal compliance. Then we saw a lot more attention, both in, in the media and, as well as in regulatory agencies on looking at pay. And so we saw this kind of turn of events where we started seeing a lot more information about wage gaps. And so that's that women are paid eighty cents on the dollar at a federal level. And then we started seeing more and more companies start to publish their wage gap numbers. And we also saw across the country, states start to import into implement their own regulatory requirements along the way. And so I've started, moved into a lot of doing wage gap studies as well as these state-based studies. And I think with that emphasis, we saw a lot of employers move away from solely a legal compliance concern with really being interested in understanding how pay influenced their employees and a particular attention on any areas where there might be race or gender disparities. And so we started doing more against statistical studies primarily that were really looking at base pay, other kinds of pay and, but solely for the purpose of understanding that and remedying any issues that they might find. And then with that, and I think particularly in the last couple of years, I've seen employers say, okay, we understand the statistics, but that's not all there is. Pay is not just base pay, how do females compare to males, it's a lot bigger picture. And we see, so we've seen employers kind of pull back and say, we want to look at everything. And when I say that, I think of, you know, combining pay equity studies with review of the actual policies and procedures that underlie those decisions, as well as starting to really look at how employees perceive pay within their, their company. And so a lot of solicitation of employee perceptions, their understanding, as well as how subjective they think those practices are. Next slide. And so when I think about kind of a holistic pay review, which is really what we're doing with Santa Clara, there are really kind of three prongs of this, with that middle prong being legal compliance, what I might consider the minimum, which is are we complying with Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, Equal Pay Act, with any state regulations, but combining that with looking at specific pay decision mechanisms such as what happens at hiring, which might be your starting pay, what grade do you enter in? Looking at performance evaluations if they influence pay, which in some companies they don't. Looking at pay increases, step increases or promotions, or any other mechanisms that might influence pay. And then, as I said, on that other side, also combining all that information with employees' perceptions. Do they understand the practices? Do they perceive the pay practices as fair? Do they, are the pay practices transparent? And then also, is there some kind of appeal or complaint process available to them? Next slide. And so what my team has done to date is a number of things. So we have undertaken a material review. And so that really involves anything related to employment practices, job information. We've done a lot of looking at the pay equity dashboard that's available as well as a number of prior pay equity either studies or work around pay equity that has been done in Santa Clara County along the way. We've also been having regular meetings and these meetings include a task with a task force that include representatives from the county executive team, county council's office, employee servant services agency, and county health system. And then we've also been talking to specific subject matter experts as needed to make sure we understood any of the documentation that we've been reviewing, to understand any of the work that's been done before we came on, to understand the data that's available and really to understand what current concerns might be. And with this, the goal is really to come up with an analysis plan for next year. And the other thing I wanted to do before I talk about kind of where we're going with our analysis plan is I did want to just spend just a few minutes talking about wage gaps. And the reason I say that is I think that there's a perception quite often when people think about pay equity, they think about really what's, what is a wage gap. You can go to the next slide. And so what we've seen over time is a number of companies publishing these wage gaps. A lot of this is being driven by shareholder activists, in particular Arjuna, who have come, come to the boards and have sued boards that come and demanded that these companies produce these numbers. And one of the things that I don't think a lot of people understand is that when companies publish these wage gaps, they're always what's known as an adjusted wage gap. It's also unlikely that you're going to see a company publish a wage gap unless it is almost dollar for dollar. And so when I say adjusted versus unadjusted, what that means is the unadjusted wage gap is a really aggregate company-wide look. Everybody on your workforce is female compared to everybody on your workforce is male without accounting for any job differences or geographic differences or any of that kind of information. And so there's some statistical techniques where we can take that wage information and control for structural variables. So most likely, when you see these adjusted wage gaps, they've been controlled for a number of factors. What's unfortunate is we never really know what factors have been controlled for. So sometimes they, these might not even be comparing apples to apples. So one company might control for job, one might control for job and location, another company might control for ten additional merit or job-related factors. And so it's sometimes, I, I don't want to say deceiving as much as I don't think they're as transparent as they could be. It would be much more informative if we had more information on what those controls were. Next slide. Where we do see publication of unadjusted wage gaps though, is really with government entities. And certainly that's due to a lot of, you know, agreements that they will make all this information transparent and publicly available. So whether the actual government entity is publishing these or some individual or a group are pulling the data down to calculate these unadjusted wage gaps, you do see this at that level. And so just for some reference, I've provided some information that I was able to pull publicly for a couple of different states, California and Connecticut, for a couple of cities, Los Angeles and San Francisco, and a couple at the county level. And one thing that really is notable, and I know this was in the pre-read, was that, you know, the most recent unadjusted wage gap for Santa Clara County was ninety-eight point eight cents on the dollar, females to males. And that's really one of, if not the highest, unadjusted wage gaps I've seen. Excellent. And so the way I wanted to present the work we've done to date and kind of before we get to the analysis plan is in a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats format. Next slide. So given all that we've done to date, you know, what, what are the strengths that I see with the county of Santa Clara? One is, you know, certainly from everything I've seen, when you're comparing employees in similar roles, there really is small to no pay differences. And a lot of this, you know, can be attributed to really low opportunity for there to be pay disparities due to the collective bargaining agreements as well as the civil service merit system. Across the county, when you look at that number, as I mentioned earlier, the wage gap is very small. You have a highly structured, very transparent employment practice evidenced by, you know, when I first put in a document request, almost all of that documentation on practices and policies and job information, my team could go to your website and actually just pull that down rather than having it be provided by some individual internally. Prior pay studies and, you know, one prime example is the two thousand sixteen state, state auditor report really reflect well. really reflect well on the county. So everything that's been done to date seems to reflect very well on the county. And then the, the pay dashboard is a real strength. Certainly it provides transparency, but also it is impressive that not only can you look at it from a county view, but then you can drill down by a number of different categories, by EO category, by department, and even down to the job level. And not only can you look at gender, but then you can also look at that, that race information as well. And that's really impressive to have that much transparency for, for that information. Next slide. In terms of weaknesses, and I don't like the word weakness, but that's just the format of this, this kind of protocol that I'm using here. But certainly anytime you have areas of discretion, that can be an area where you may have some risk or some, some area where there could be some disparities. And so we did a lot of discussion and a lot of review to identify, are there any practices where there could be discretion, where we may want to dig deeper? And we did identify some. And then the other big area I think is employee perceptions and understanding. So, you know, we don't really know, do employees really understand the pay practices? I know it's, the information is available, you can go find it, but sometimes that can be a little cumbersome. And so there's some sort of area here there that, that could be an area of improvement. And then how do employees perceive the pay practices? So following right along with that, where do I see the opportunities? I think the opportunities are examining any of those pay, those pay practices where you have discretion, conducting a survey to examine both understanding and perceptions of the pay practices. And then the other area, which, because you can always improve even on something that's well done, is to do a little more digging in the current dashboard and to look at whether or not we might be able to to combine some other demographic information, in particular, whether or not there's some other race by gender metrics we might be able to include, and if there are other kind of metrics that might be useful. And then the other thing that I think we always just have to kind of keep in mind, because they can certainly influence current practices, future practices, or any kind of external factors that may be a play. And the ones that I've listed here are just some of the ones that certainly could have some pressure on your pay practices. And so one obviously is labor demands. My understanding is it's not as, as prominent at County of Santa Clara currently, but certainly in the United States right now, there are huge worker shortages. And so that puts a lot of pressure on bringing people in and attracting them as well as retaining them, which can have some unanticipated consequences on your pay. Also, with County of Santa Clara, you are smack dab in the middle of tech central. And so just being in the technology area can certainly have some influence on employee perceptions as well as others. The other one, you know, certainly not surprising, COVID. We don't know what's going to happen with COVID, if there's another surge, if we're dealing with, you know, relitigating mask mandates, vaccine mandates, remote workers. So that certainly is something that we need to keep an eye on. Inflationary pressures, which again, if the cost of living is higher, then that certainly puts pressure on employers to address that employee need because the employees are feeling a lot of pressure and that can certainly influence their perceptions. Continued socio-political pressures. So we see in social media, in the regular media, when stories become big around wage gaps, around pay, around race, all of those kind of issues can have pressure on these kind of projects. And then, of course, regulatory changes. So as we have leaders change at the federal or state level, as government entities that are surrounding you are having conversations and then really just kind of keeping an eye on what we see might happen in the future. So our focus is, as I'd said, identifying and studying any pay practices where there is a discretionary point, developing, implementing and analyzing an employee survey. That's slated to happen this summer. Examine the feasibility of including other groups of interest, so intersection of gender and race where it's feasible. The possibility of including LGBTQ, which again, all of those are really dependent on the availability of data. So that, that will be something we'll look at. And then also, as I'd said, digging more into the pay dashboard and all these other kind of things that we're doing may influence some of the suggestions we have for the pay dashboard. And then identifying regular studies that the County of Santa Clara may be able to conduct to help allow you to kind of look at trends over time. And that gives you a whole nother level of, of information. And this will culminate in a strategic plan that will incorporate everything that we have found to date. And that's where we are at this point. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you very much, Lisa. I appreciate that very comprehensive report. Couple of things I want to say, my wife and I have degrees in psychology. I heard you're an industrial organizational psychologist.
That's correct.
I don't remember that being on the menu 40 years ago at USC. But it's nice to know all these different variations. That's number one. Number two, and my fellow board members know I love doing this. It sounds like our unadjusted wage gap is perhaps in the top 1% in the nation at 98.8%.
It's, it's, it is, as I said, it is very high. You, you, and I think that one of the things that we'll be looking at too is, you know, the unadjusted wage gap really gives you a lot of information on the distribution
Yep.
of people in different demographic groups. So looking at the different jobs and where that plays in with females. And, and so we'll be digging some into that as well, but that is correct.
I hear you, but I'm, we're all cheerleaders for Santa Clara County.
Oh, you should be. You absolutely should be.
At a number that rounds out at 99%, we are doing a damn good job. And as you said, you can always get better. And I'll conclude my comments and then turn to my fellow supervisors. On package page 77, item D is in David, areas of opportunity for the county that you showed in your PowerPoint.
Correct.
I'm excited about us pursuing those areas of opportunity so we can be even better. And 99 is great, 100 is the goal and other areas to improve. So I'm very excited about where we are and where we're headed. With that, I'll turn to Supervisor Chavez and Vice President Ellenberg.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and the report. And first, I wanted to just share some thoughts with Dr. Luna. On the background of the document, it has the, the number of actions. And I really appreciate so much of the actions being reflected back here. One thing I would like to request, and I have requested this of staff in the past, is that when we know who brought the referrals forward, that we put the person's name. And I think the reason this is important is I actually can't remember if the referral came from me or Supervisor Cortezi then, or both of us or who. But for, for purposes of when people go back to look at when we made changes in our process, I think it's really actually very important to understand where that came from as part of our analysis of where we were and where we're going. So staff, the reason I normally ask that is for exactly that reason. So I, I just want to make sure we, we look at that in the future because I think one of the biggest advocates we had was actually Supervisor Cortezi. And, and I think that's very important. Just a couple of things that I want to, I want to highlight and ask. As part of the, the work being done here, I know that we were working through the Office of Women's Policy. And I, and I understand the Oversight Committee still has the Office of Women's Policy playing a participating role in that. Can I just confirm that on the record?
That's correct, Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you, Dr. Luna. And then there are two areas that you have highlighted that I want to make sure are really prioritized and dug into more deeply. And one of them is occupational segregation. And that is part of the Base Three Survey and Analysis. And, and I'm very interested in better understanding that, especially in an organization as highly unionized and frankly, so female heavy as ours. So I want to really lift that up and make sure that we're doing a deeper dive into that area. And then the other that I'm very interested in understanding as it relates to the county is how we address issues like pregnancy and leave and family medical leave. And how, when we're looking at overall financial achievement for women and men, that we are looking at both childbearing and, and in particular, the areas I'm interested in are reasonable accommodation and whether or not we're, how we're supporting both men and women in those processes. And then frankly, what happens to women from a trajectory perspective based on that. And I don't need a response to that today. I just want to make sure that comes back to us as part of any final product. I'm very excited about this. I lastly want to just request that we get, you know, six-month check-ins, even if they're very brief, through FTOC as I consider this more of an audit. Thank you, and thanks to staff for the work.
Thank you, Vice President Ellenberg.
Thank you so much to Dr. Luna and to your team and administration for the, the continued really great work on the pay equity strategic plan. Really every ledge file on the topic has been thorough, it's been clear, it indicates measurable output and has really provided valuable, shows really that valuable progress is being made. I want to just also thank administration for having carved out a time certain for this item to be heard, which is just further indication that we take this issue very seriously. Clearly, my predecessors on, on the board, as well as the county, have been long committed to being an employer of choice. And doing that certainly by being able to show that we are ensuring equal pay for equal work and championing policies that provide that much-needed economic security for our employees and their families is a, is a big piece of that. The Strategic Plan Progress Report is also really timely. March 15th marked the first equal payday of the year. And of course, I say that because it symbolizes how far into the year white women must work on average just to earn what an average male made the previous year. The gender gap pay is yet another reminder of how women are impacted by, by inequality. And unfortunately for women of color, equal payday falls later in the year. For every dollar earned by a white man, and obviously I'm talking more generally than within our county government, but the, but the details are really important. AAPI women earn 75 cents and reach parity by May 3rd. And it's, it's later if you disaggregate different racial groups within the AAPI community. Black women earn 58 cents and reach parity by September 21st. Native American women earn 50 cents and reach parity on December 1st. And Latinos earn 49 cents and reach parity by December 8th of the following year. As the third largest employer in the county, we really are leading by example. And it, and it's heartening to see that the, that there is small to no pay difference between men and women in our county. And in the spirit of continuous improvement and iteration, one area of opportunity not explicitly covered in the ledge file is a suggestion to include non-binary people when examining more deeply pay differences by race, ethnicity, sexual orientation under item D bullet three. The board voted on Board Policy 3.71, which addresses gender-inclusive language, which ensures to the maximum extent possible and to the extent permitted by law, all of our official documents and communications from the county are drafted with gender-inclusive language. So just in honor of this commitment, we should also ensure that non-binary and gender expansive individuals are included in the pay equity study. And also, as I, I, I do agree that we should expand our current dashboard to examine race and would encourage the disaggregation of ethnic identities within racial groups as additional useful metrics. Again, I'm, I'm proud of where we are. I, I hope that we are a shining beacon to the rest of the county where they, where the stats are not quite so strong. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to take the direction in both Supervisor Chavez and Supervisor Ellenberg's comments as a motion by Chavez and second by Ellenberg. Is that okay with the two of you?
Thank you very much, Mike. Yes.
Yes, and yes. Wonderful. And Supervisor Chavez, having been here back then, I think it was you and now Senator Cortezi, September 15th, 2015, that brought the referral forward to investigate this. That was six and a half years ago. The result of that initial request has earned us the 98.8%. And I will stick to that being in the top 1% of the nation and a beacon, as Vice President Ellenberg said. And I join everybody else in saying, let's improve where we can. And with that, I've got a motion and a second. We now have one speaker. Let's let that one speaker in, please, for two minutes, and then that'll be it.
Our speaker is Hervish Kumar Metta. I'm unmuting you, please accept the unmute. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much to both of Supervisor. I wanted to acknowledge Lisa Harpist's presentation on the, on the pay equality. I think it is important to recognize that within the Silicon Valley, what we, what we wanted to see is, is the pay equality. Though we know that, you know, we are at the doorstep.
Excuse me, Hervish, for interrupting you. Is that background coming from you again?
Not really, sir.
Okay, whoever has the background sound coming through, if they could please mute themselves so Hervish can be heard clearly. Please continue.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Thank, thank you very much again. I think we are at the doorstep of a Silicon Valley where we see the most of the corporate environment. The pays are being decided on the pay grades, though it is important to recognize that, that the, how the pay, pay qualities between the man and women are being strategized versus what other job postings are out there and then how they are being strategized in order to make the pay grades in a way that, you know, they are being paid on the basis that, on the skills and as well as the level, the level and the scale of, scale of apprehension towards a work is being achieved within the corporate environment. Though it differs from industry to industry, and we try to find the balance that, you know, where we wanted to make sure that there are no pay inequalities. But we really wanted to see, what we really wanted to see a balance is that in the form of that, that how we are achieving the pay equalities in terms of the maintaining the balance in every industry as every industry sees the scale of the pay differently in terms of, in terms of technology, in terms of a government, in terms of finance. In, in, in terms of agriculture, the pays are different. When we are comparing the apples to apples, that makes a real balanced scenario between the man, women, as well as LGBT community people being hired versus when it is required to see the pay quality. It is also important to see that, you know, how individuals are, how individuals are scaled up to the scale as well. So there are a lot of different factors, but I wanted to acknowledge the facts that has been deriving to the, as a part of a sort.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes public comment. We have a motion and a second on the floor. It looks like I cannot call for a vote yet. Vice President Ellenberg, your hand is raised. No, Supervisor Lee, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, President Ossman. I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Dr. Luna, for the excellent report. Very glad that our county is doing so well. At the same time, what's shocking actually in the business, in San Francisco, with the 83% there. And I just want to say that maybe if there's a role for us to reach out to our neighboring counties to see if we might be able to offer assistance for them, or at least highlight these to them to let them know that whatever we're doing right, maybe there's something that we could share with them, like sharing best practices. So I just want to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll mention again, the fact that San Francisco doesn't even have a pro football team. So we're ahead in many respects. They, they can learn a lot from us. You are absolutely right. All right, Nancy, bring us home here. Roll call vote.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye, with a thanks.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Ossman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on in numerical order to item number 13. A referral from Supervisor Chavez.
Thank you very much. Item 13 is a request that I have to administration. And I'm going to clarify the request that is in the referral to look for necessary resources to support the installation of nine freeway sign panels that will highlight Barack Obama Boulevard in our county and ask that the, the staff look for non-general fund resources. And so that what that means is that we are general fund neutral in this ask. The city of San Jose is renaming Bird, South Montgomery, South Autumn, North Autumn Street in a significant recognition of this important legacy for President Obama. There was a great deal of community and city support for this, including a fundraising effort by the Barack Obama Boulevard Committee that funded the replacement of the city's street signs. Unfortunately, there is no identified funding to update the freeway sign panels. And so I'm asking staff to work with MTC specifically and the city of San Jose to look for those resources and come back to the board. and come back to the board with options. This is a significant opportunity for us as a county to demonstrate the equity pledge that we've taken and to support the recognition and the service and the leadership and the legacy of President Barack Obama and the collaborative efforts and leadership taken by our community to bring this street change to fruition. The Barack Obama Boulevard Committee not only raised $20,000, but did years of outreach to make this come true. And that would be my request.
That's a motion by you. Supervisor Lee?
I'm happy to second it. And certainly, I want to clarify the questions with the maker of motion is that the motion is to specifically say that there will be no county general fund being expended on this request, correct?
What I'm suggesting is that we use the language that it would be general fund neutral. And that gives the staff the flexibility to reach out and ask, access other partners for resources.
Okay. And you mentioned MTC as a potential regional source, right? Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Before we call for the vote, we have four speakers. Let's give them up to two minutes each. If we go over-- oh, we're adding on quickly here. Hold on just a minute. And for all those calling in to speak, please realize you have a motion and a second already. So you can have up to two minutes. Supervisor Semidion, I'll call on you first.
Thank you. Just a quick question for the maker and the seconder. As proposed, I understand that no-- the revenue-neutral impact on the general fund component. Presumably, though, the roads funds, which I think are separate from our general fund, might end up being tapped. And if they were, that would be to the exclusion of some other project for roads. Did I-- I very much appreciate the general fund exception. And I appreciate the recommendation to look to the city of San Jose and MTC. You know, we're in an interesting position here, given that this was a city decision about city streets and roads. And we're talking about state highway signs. But so far, we have yet to get any commitment from either the city or the state to be part of this. And that's why I appreciate the maker of the motion suggesting that we really reach out and see what's possible with MTC and/or the city. But am I correct that this could involve the use of roads funds as proposed?
Let's get your question answered by Dr. Smith.
No. County roads funds could not be used because it's not a county road. So I think looking at other partners like MTC, the city, and others in that situation would be probably the best that we could do.
Thank you. That's a helpful clarification, just so we know what the possibilities are and aren't going forward. And again, my thanks to the maker and the seconder for trying to pull other folks into the funding process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to our public speakers, Nancy. Each may have up to two minutes.
Okay. Our first speaker is Ron Hanson. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. This is Ron Hanson speaking. It was my pleasure to serve with the dedicated community members on the Barack Obama Boulevard Committee. This small but mighty group worked with the city of San Jose, first initiating and then guiding the effort to identify and rename a key thoroughfare in San Jose for President Barack Obama. Although the street itself is well-marked now for everyone to see and reference, the adjoining freeway off-ramps are not. This referral will begin the process to provide funding and support for this final, important Boulevard naming project. I urge your support for this referral. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Beal. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Well, Board members, this is Jim Bell, and I urge support of this resolution. And thank you all for your service. I believe that the resolution that's proposed will ensure that the multitude of funds that could be available to fund this project can be considered. And it's so important that we continue the work of the committee, the Barack Obama Committee, which I served from the inception as a member and honorary chair of the committee. So thank you very much for your service. And I'll be working with you to search out all the different funding sources that we need to find to fund these signs on Highway 280. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Our next speaker is Helen Sims. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin. Helen, can you please unmute yourself? And we will come back to her. Next speaker is Alex Shore. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hey, good morning again, Supervisors. This is Alex Shore, speaking now personally, not on behalf of any organization I'm with. I hope you saw my email late last week about this topic as one of the founders of the effort to get a street named after Barack Obama. Really, really important to continue to try and move forward with this. And I appreciate potential concerns from Supervisors like Supervisor Semidion on why is the county paying for this? And why is the amount so high? Those were questions sort of that rattled around a little bit in my head. I want to thank Supervisor Chavez. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Chavez, for helping us move this across the finish line, for bringing up the issues of equity. I also want to just reinforce the point of what I think might appeal to all county supervisors, which is I'm driving along 280 now, north through downtown San Jose, and I come up on an exit called Bird Avenue. And on one side of the street, yes, is Bird Avenue. On the other side, as you get off the exit, is Barack Obama Boulevard. And that is not-- that there is no signage that says that coming off the highway. So for the sake of drivers, both residents of the area and visitors, I think it's important and I think it's reasonable for the county to be involved in trying to make sure that people can understand how to navigate through our county and our communities. So I think that's a good reason for the county to be involved in this. And we certainly appreciate the support and the help. We appreciate Senator Bell and Senator Cortez for their support of this and your consideration. It's been a real effort and a challenge to build a coalition of the willing. But we've been able to do it. And there's been a ton of community and government support. We hope this body can support it as well. Thank you so, so much.
Next speaker is Tony Alexander. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Tony Alexander, community leader here. First, I'd like to thank you for considering this. Thank you, Supervisor Chavez and the rest of the Supervisors. We've been working on this coalition for a number of years. And we've had both the city of San Jose and state and county government leaders working with us. And so we would appreciate that we continue on with the things that we're trying to do here. Barack Obama Boulevard, it was a beautiful ceremony for opening that up. And we would like to make sure that we continue this. And as Alex Shore had mentioned, we would appreciate that. We'd like to see it also on 280. And whatever help that we can get will be great. So again, thank you, Supervisors, and please vote yes in this consideration. And thank you again.
Next speaker is Milan Ballington. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, good morning, Board of Supervisors. And thank you, Supervisor Chavez, for bringing this forward to be on the agenda. And thank you to the staff that are going to do research to figure out how can we make this possible. When I think about when the journey of starting to create Barack Obama Boulevard, I think back when I was a little black boy. And I'm still sometimes on the inside, a little black boy growing up and looking for examples that looked like me and the representation at the sign. Some would just say, well, it's a sign and it's a lot of money. But representation matters. Signs and symbols matter. And I recall a quote by Barack Obama where he said, "Now as a nation, we don't promise equal outcomes, but we were founded on the idea that everybody should have an equal opportunity to be, no matter who you are, what you look like."
Milan, you're echoing like in a tunnel. It's hard to understand you. Milan, can you hear me?
You can make it.
Milan, can you hear me? Nancy, would you try--
Milan, we are having trouble with your audio. Are you still with us?
Can you hear me clearly now?
Yes.
Yes. Please continue if you wish. Nancy, let's leave Milan. If he comes back, let's give him a minute six.
Okay. Milan, we'll come back to you in a bit. We'll go back to Helen Sims. Helen, I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. Helen, can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Thank you. When the vision for a major street to be named for President Obama was shared with the wider San Jose community, residents from East San Jose, West San Jose, downtown San Jose, and yes, Google, there was widespread support, happy support. The San Jose City Council unanimously voted to approve Barack Obama Boulevard. Our San Jose community generously donated to finance the Obama street signs. To our elected leaders and Supervisors, we say thank you for your support. This morning, we asked for your support on this last phase, freeway signage. As the major city in Santa Clara County, the heart of Silicon Valley, our city deserves clarity and proper directions as we travel about. Proper freeway signage will provide that. And that is our ask today, freeway signage. It's not always easy to do what's right, but it is always right. Thank you in advance for your support for Barack Obama Boulevard signage.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Milan Ballington. I'm going to allow you to speak again. The timer will be set to a minute six to allow you to have your remaining time. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Don't worry, I have to get a new cell phone company. But now here I am. So what I am essentially saying to the board and to the staff is thank you for considering this because all of the children, the families, when they see the sign that says President Barack Obama, that they will do the research and look at what his impacts were from a national level to locally here. But also, it will serve as a reminder, as I was quoting him, is that it doesn't matter where you start, but it matters and determines where you end up. And that that sign, when people see it, that will remind them here in Santa Clara County of where they can go regardless of their situation. But I thank you all for considering this and the staff that is going to do the work and to do diligence to make sure that they provide us with resources and information on how to make that best decision to put the signs on the freeway so everybody can see when they come to Santa Clara County, come on, drive down to the Barack Obama Boulevard and see the beautiful city of Santa Clara. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ervish Kumar Mehta. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Thank you very much. When we talk about the highways, what first thing comes to the equation is the California Transportation Commission and as well as the Highway Authority. Now, as a part of a freeway development, what is the common practice? Is that the Boulevard is known to be the largest road? And when we have a largest road, something like what we have in Los Angeles, the Sausalito Boulevard, Sunset Boulevard, or any well-known institution or organization that are being named after it, certainly having it named as a Barack Obama Boulevard, it is a presidential nominee Boulevard in such that the common practice is that the signs be placed, identical sign be placed on both the sides. And also, these signs be recognized in a way after the president's work that is required to be referenced in the county of Santa Clara. So I really wanted to thank you, Board of Supervisors, for acknowledging that and as well as giving the emphasis on what is to be developed as a part of a freeway within the county of Santa Clara. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Walter Wilson. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Good morning, President Wasserman, Board of Supervisors, staff. And to Supervisor Chavez, thank you so much for moving this effort forward. You know, I tend to agree with everyone here that this is a very important effort to take place, but for some different reasons. I am the project manager for the African-American Cultural Center Project, which is a rebuilding of the new African-American Community Service Agency. And I think it's very important that people of color, particularly black people, you know, have an understanding that we have a place here in Santa Clara County. And not just is it recognized by the board and the city, but it's shown in the symbols. And symbols matter, like Milan said. And I too share Alex Shore's vision that when you're driving up the street-- I know Barack Obama Boulevard is there when I'm coming off the freeway. I just don't see it. And I think it's very important that not just African, African-American people be proud of this, but all Americans be proud of the opportunity to highlight the first African-American president in U.S. history as part of our city, as part of our county, and as part of our very presence. So I want to thank you for supporting this,[1582.18] So I want to thank you for supporting this and I look forward to assisting and moving this effort forward. Thank you so much and have a good day.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. I've got one comment. I'll make it follow their supervisors. I don't see any other hands up. Couple of things about this. It's been said already as far as not an effect on the general fund. The referral itself says to look for options for consideration relating for financial support. That's what's being asked of us today. I certainly think it's appropriate that MTC fund, backfill, do whatever you want to say to make this thing happen. What I am interested in hearing from staff when they report back to us. You know, when I get my registration stickers each year and I put them on my license plate, sometimes I scratch off the other stickers. Sometimes I just put the sticker right on top. I'm thinking in this day and age, the state Caltrans could simply print a sticker that they put over the existing one as show on page ninety-six and ninety-seven. They get a sticker and they just put it right on. That way, this should not cost forty-seven thousand dollars per sign to put a sticker over the existing one. Supervisor Lee.
Thank you, President Wasserman. I think I'm in the same thinking as you in terms of ways to find funding and very glad to see that Supervisor Chavez is able to, and made it clear that there will be general fund neutral and clarifying that both funds will not be used for this. I do want to mention that we did receive a letter from our predecessor, now Senator Cortez, of some potential options that might be proposed through the state level as well, working through the MTC. So I just want to say I'm very excited about that. And along the way of thinking about what a sticker, the other thing is I do want the administration maybe to also report back any opportunities to align the work with the state's maintenance schedule for signage replacement to consolidate costs. Because if, if the signs were supposed to be placed anyways, then the state can certainly print the new ones with the, with the Barack Obama name on the sign. So I think those are ways that we can make this all work. So I just wanted to add that comment as well to, to make it. But at the end of the day, I really think this is extremely meaningful and worthwhile and significant. And as Mr. Wilson mentioned, the symbols do matter and that people be able to recognize this on the highway as well. So I certainly think this is something that our county can support, but certainly given the fact that this is actually placed on the federal highway, we are not really, it's not like expressway, which is the county's responsible for putting signage. So I think having this, this option of finding funds from other sources certainly is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Chavez, a second by Lee. Any other comments by supervisors? Supervisor Lee, your hand is still raised? Your hand is down. Nancy, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez? Yes. Supervisor Semidian?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg? And President Wasserman?
Aye. Okay, what I was looking at was breaking at twelve fifteen, which is twenty minutes from now. My suggestion, we could break now and come back at twelve forty-five, if that's all right with the board, or we can go to twelve fifteen and come back at one. I don't see anybody saying one thing or the other. I would suggest then Supervisor Lee that we do items seventeen and eighteen now, the two resolutions, and then we break for lunch. Are you up to that?
Sounds good.
Okay. I'm going to go to item seventeen, and when we return from lunch, we'll go starting with item fourteen. Item seventeen is adopting a resolution affirming the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. And I need to say, I want to ask Nancy, there she is. Nancy, you are so good. Nancy has brought up one of the posters. There are several made in various different languages. But I want to say that this resolution is very near and dear to my heart. When the idea was introduced several years back, I knew it was something that our county needed. A Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights not only provides a specific list of nature-based activities, but it encourages experiences for all children and families in our community, regardless of their background, where they live, or what language they speak. It's about equity, and all children and families in our community should have access to the natural resources that our county has to offer. This was developed after a very thought-out process with much community engagement, including multilingual surveys, focus groups, and even jam boards. See how hip I am now? Even jam boards. So many individuals worked hard to make this happen. I would especially like to thank a few. That would be Dr. Lori Bostic-Caman, who launched this idea in our county about two and a half years ago. I also want to thank our Public Health Department and our County Parks Team. Thank you all for making this happen in Santa Clara County, assuming there's the votes to do so. It will be my honor to make the motion that we adopt this resolution affirming the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights. We will be, as usual, one of the very first counties in the nation to bring something good to the people we serve. All right, Vice President Ellenberg, your hand is raised?
Yeah, I'm very happy to, to second it and would like to just make a, a comment if, if that is your pleasure, President Wasserman.
Please. And Nancy, with your control of the boards, if you can get rid of me and bring up, that's your one step ahead of me, Nancy. All right. Go ahead, please. Vice President Ellenberg.
I, I think every point on here is absolutely beautiful. The, the challenge of making it a reality is access. And what I'm interested in and would be glad to hear your thoughts, President Wasserman, is yes, and what follows this declaration of rights? Are you recommending that the county allocate funding to help kids get outside to increase access to our parks, where we do have some excellent educational programs, but so many schools don't have the funding for, for buses and field trip, trips? Are we thinking more about supporting camps? It's, as much as I love this and I will absolutely vote for it today, it's almost painful to list all of these wonderful things and know that if we don't take some proactive action, a lot of kids are not going to be able to to realize the, the vision in this beautiful document. So I would like to hear your thoughts about how we follow up.
Absolutely. And, and schools getting kids there and our parks being open. But I'm going to turn to Supervisor Lee right now for his thoughts.
Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to say thank you Supervisor Wasserman for bringing this important resolution forward for our children in our county. I would actually like to request to see if, if this is amenable to ask park staff to provide a, some type of off-adjourned report to come back either in April, maybe by late, late April, to see if we could consider during the budget workshop, the feasibility of hosting a free or discounted park admission day at our county parks periodically, monthly, if we could afford it, or at least, you know, a couple of times a year throughout the, the parks that we have in our county. And because I surely believe that this would also encourage those in our community with children that might have financial barriers, access our park system, the opportunity to enjoy the community resource we have and really align to the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights and work with the school as well as mentioned by Supervisor Ellenberg. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Lee. And I want to make the point that this is the first step. This is a launch pad that public health has created that parks obviously is a very important partner with. And I look forward to Vice President Ellenberg, excuse me, I look forward to public health coming back with ideas of how we can collaborate, how we can make access easier for those in our community where access is not easy. So this is simply the first step, and public health knows that. And I appreciate you, Vice President Ellenberg, specifying it. There is more to come. But this is the first step, having this for Santa Clara County.
I'm delighted to hear that and will look forward to how we make sure our children get to exercise that, these new rights, or these, these rights.
You got it. Thank you all. There's no public speakers, no other hands raised. Nancy, vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez? Yes. Supervisor Semidian?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes. Thank you very much. That was item seventeen. Supervisor Lee, I'm turning to you for item eighteen.
Thank you. The item eighteen is the resolution to support the seamless transit principles aiming to achieve an integrated regional transit system. First of all, as we all know, public transportation is absolutely important to the future of Santa Clara County. It is key in reaching both environmental sustainability goals and our equity goals. Santa Clara County is served by multiple agencies, including the VTA, Caltrain, BART, ACE Capital Corridor, and now neighboring transit agencies of Samtrans, AC Transit, Santa Cruz Metro, as well as numerous private transportation operators such as the Mountain View Community Shuttle, Stanford Marguerite Shuttle, A Shuttles, just to name a few. However, despite these numerous transit providers and significant investment in our transit over the past several decades, the transit use here has never risen above five percent of commute trips. And this is why I brought this resolution forward to the board. Adopting this resolution would add our voice to over twenty other public entities and over sixty-five nonprofit and business organizations support the seven key seamless transit principles. Because without the seamless, integrated, easy-to-use, and rider-focused transit system, we are not likely to see the increase in ridership we need as Santa Clara County continues to grow. And especially in light of the high prices of gas, the need for transportation and affordable public transportation that's efficient and seamless is even more important these days. So for these reasons, I urge an eye vote from my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Lee. Supervisor Chavez?
Thank you. I will second the motion, but I want to add two components Supervisor Lee with your, with your support. One is that, you know, I think in, at a high level, these principles make a lot of sense. There are two issues that I want to bring up for my colleagues. One is that, you know, I think it's very important that we can be accountable to the taxpayers of the particular regions that we're from. And one thing that's unique about Santa Clara County is that we really, I think we probably tax ourselves more than any other county relative to transportation. As an example, we are fifty-six percent of the sales tax that go into Caltrain. We're, we're paying directly from our county and we're paying directly from our county also. I think it's another forty million a year to, for our BART contract. And we have low, a low fare box recovery, but we have a high investment in terms of our buses. So what I would like to say is in the whereas, the whereas column, the second, the last whereas column, that we add and that we have the ability to be accountable to taxpayers and that we're, that that accountability also reflect, is reflected in whatever governance models go forward. And I think that's important Supervisor Lee, because that all of the, you know, as we're looking at the nine barrier counties, that the funding streams are so dramatically different that I want to make sure that we're just being mindful of our responsibilities and obligations to folks who voted for these taxes in our county.
Yes, thank you.
That was a yes from the motion maker. All right, I'll look to Supervisor Semidian now.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. I would just like to ask that in the final clause, the now therefore be it resolved, that we specifically call out the inclusion of the Valley Transportation Agency, VTA, among the groups. I know that the clause calls out the MTC and municipalities and other public agencies, but you know, this is a resolution that I think really speaks to the, the transit agencies and the congestion management efforts and, you know, both of those functions reside with VTA, as I know we all know. So I, I would just ask that after the words, the Metropolitan Transportation, comma, we insert the Valley Transportation Agency parentheses, VTA, end parentheses, comma, and then pick it up again with municipalities. If that's okay with the maker and the seconder, I would appreciate just calling that out because that's really where the work has to be done in our area.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Semidian. That's acceptable.
Thank you so much.
For the seconder, thank you. That is as well, good catch.
Thank you. And we have those speakers. Supervisor Smitty, your hand is still raised? It is down. Nancy, roll call vote on eighteen, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidian?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
And President Wasserman?
Yes, as well. Thank you. We're now going to use this time, we're going to receive a report from county executives and county council, and that should do it. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to give the board an update on the COVID policy and ordinance, or not ordinance, administrative policy that was talked about during the public comment. We have been working on a new policy directed at going back to the situation that existed before the Public Health Order identified special locations which could not be used by employees. And so we will have a policy out on Monday that'll take effect on Friday.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Smith?
I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Hands raised. Vice President Ellenberg?
Supervisor Chavez had her, her hand up first.
Oh, that's all right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Dr. Smith, I wonder if you could say a little bit more about what kind of policy you're talking about and to address some of the, the specific confusion. And I feel, you know, personally very invested in the response here because I have been assuring employees that have reached out that, yes, we are working on getting folks back to work. You heard us at the last board meeting. Yes, of course, this is happening. And then to hear so many instances in which it is not happening leads me to need to clarify what category of employees and, and focusing mostly on, on the healthcare and the healthcare, since that's where we're hearing from, what category of employees is actually being reviewed for return? And is there any subset that at this point is not being considered? I think that would help, help allay some of the, the confusion that we heard reference.
Dr. Smith?
Okay, let me, let me try the best I can. We had a policy before the latest health order that had to do with identifying working environments that were low, medium, and high risk for transmission. When the health order was instituted, a number of individuals who were in low and medium risk categories were, at the time, removed up to high because of the way the order required certain areas to not be, not have employees that were unvaccinated. So for example, janitors and fleet and facility workers in the hospital, we initially listed them as low or immediate, intermediate because they had very little contact with patients. But because the health order prohibited unvaccinated from working in the healthcare environment, they became high, in high risk. So the change will go back to the status before the public health order. But there still will be individual jobs that are high risk. For example, nursing in neonatal intensive care unit or the critical care unit or the radiation oncology unit. All are areas where you certainly would not want to have someone who's unvaccinated working. So I think, you know, you've heard from some of the nursing staff. There are currently about forty-seven nurses on unpaid leave. Not all of those nurses are on unpaid leave because of the health order or because of vaccination status. Some are on unpaid leave because of their refusal to fill out exemptions. So we're looking at those carefully to try to make sure that we get people matched with the right environment. But realistically, we cannot suggest that someone who's working in a neonatal intensive care unit should be unvaccinated, just like we wouldn't allow them to come if they had the flu or if they had some other contagious disease like tuberculosis or whatever. So that's why it took us some time to come up with the new order and evaluation.
And so the changes that you're contemplating in, in this new policy, i- is it clarifying what the current policy is or are you going to make further changes?
There will be changes and we're going to clarify them. We're trying to get language that'll be unambiguous and clear. That's part of the reason why it took us a while because there are number of different situations in the county since we have so many businesses. Obviously, another one that's of concern is custody, custody health, juvenile hall. We also have concerns about social services, individuals who are responsible for contact with children and families. So we're looking at all of the different businesses, business lines that the county deals with and concerned about areas where there would be high risk of transmission.
Thank you. Just, just one final question. Again, harkening back to some of the things that we, we heard during public comment. Is it, is it accurate that nurses at El Camino, Stanford, and Good Samaritan who are unvaccinated are working in NICUs and emergency rooms if they have religious exemptions?
I really can't speak to that. I've heard rumors that that is accurate, but I haven't investigated, so I don't know.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the update. And I would encourage you, when the new policy is made available, to review it with representatives from the, from the impacted groups to make sure that it's in fact as clear as. to make sure that it's in fact as clear as, as you will seek for it to be.
Thank you Supervisor Chavez.
Certainly will because it's not uncommon that something that seems clear to us is not clear to others. But yes, we will do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Two, two issues that I would just want to add on. I'm presuming that the, that part of the document that you're developing is, details the process by which the an individual gets evaluated for placement back into their jobs and then also then what the options are for the, that placement. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the second part of that is, will and do we now, and did we, well, maybe that's too confusing. I guess what I'm wondering is what role does reasonable accommodation play in this situation or should it play or will it play?
It's still part of the policy that reasonable accommodation should be made for individuals who have exemptions. Part of the problem that occurred when the Public Health Order was instituted was that reasonable accommodation options decreased significantly because of the limitations of working in the healthcare environment or in custodial environments. So now there'll be more options for reasonable accommodation.
And then last, I guess we have a, I'm a little concerned about, and I don't know if this is the case, Dr. Smith, are there, are, will the timeline for these address any outstanding issues relative to folks at risk of being fired?
For the group that's brought back, no. For the other groups, there's still the need to do reasonable accommodation and evaluation. So if, for example, you're a nurse in the neonatal intensive care unit, there's that person, if there's no reasonable accommodation that they're willing to take, will be at risk.
I see what you're saying. What about, okay, so I hear what you're saying. I want to make sure that in areas particularly, I'm concerned about nursing firefighting and also the jails. And I understand the point you're raising about, about how you manage risk. In those, in those instances, the process by which we're pursuing this means that we're not firing anybody right now, that you're going to go through a process with everybody who's on unpaid leave to determine placement for them. And then if placement can't be accommodated to use, just use this shared language, then, then folks may be at risk of being fired.
Well, first of all, the fire department is different and they've already brought back everyone because they felt that the environment was safe enough and they could make the living environment for the firefighters safe enough. So that's proceeding in terms of the county structure. You're right. The individuals will have an opportunity to have reasonable accommodation if there's a possibility for that. If not, they go through the SKELE process, which is a hearing process which allows for additional review and input. And if at the end of the SKELE process, there's not either a vaccination or a reasonable accommodation found, then at that point they're at risk. We're just.
And then my last question is, Dr. Smith, could you affirm that the total number of employees that fall into this category in particular in, maybe with the four largest employment groups, four or five largest employment groups? That can be off agenda. I don't think you would know it off the top of your head, but I am curious about where these folks sit and, you know, what are the, what are the most impacted?
Right.
Yeah, most impacted classifications. Thank you.
The number has been changing significantly. So I would get you an off agenda report to try to do that because I don't want to just pick a number.
Yeah, I didn't want to, my goal's not to, yeah, my goal's just to get it accurately. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just remind everybody, this says, we can't give direction on something since this item is not agendized. Supervisor Chavez, your hand is up. I presume you're going to put that down. Supervisor Lee, your hand is up. And let's finish with your comments and we'll go to James.
Sure. I don't believe we have a agenda today for Dr. Cody to speak. So I just want to mention those issues with Dr. Smith regarding the the latest numbers we're looking at. The BA2 variant seems to be rapidly increasing and is shown to be over 50% more transmissible. Looking like there's another wave coming. But the word out there is that we shouldn't be as worried because that so many people have been vaccinated. As I was born in Hong Kong, when I look at the Hong Kong death rates, it's surprising to see that a place that has done really, really well for a long time suddenly have a substantially increasing death rates. And that's due to the fact that there are many older individuals and immunized compromised individuals did not get vaccinated early on. And now that the, these new variants are coming certainly is causing the death rate to spike. I just want to mention that and I know Dr. Smith is very much aware of it. But I just want to make sure that we are getting ready to prepare for face of the fact that we are just, you know, having this relaxed face mask mandate and folks are now certainly gathering more and more. So just to make sure that we are going to be ready for the uptick that will be coming through. Thank you.
Yes Supervisor, maybe I can comment a little bit on that since it is related. That certainly is a concern. You'll notice that in the United Kingdom and like you said, Hong Kong and a few other areas around the world, they're having new spikes. And we tend in this country to follow those patterns. And even though we in this county have done a tremendous job, you know, the, the citizens have, for the most part, gotten vaccinated. They've been very good with shelter in place and distancing. The, despite all that, the unvaccinated population, which includes kids and the minimally vaccinated, which includes elders, are still at risk. And so the pandemic's not over worldwide and it's not over in this county because it's not over worldwide. So we're very, very, very concerned about that. And new variants are coming around on a regular basis. You mentioned one of them. There's others that are growing. And so we're, we're watching for that.
Thank you. Anything else Supervisor Lee?
That's all. Thank you very much.
Hopefully our vaccines are effective and life-saving. And whenever we're supposed to get another vaccine, I'll be in line. All right, that's a report from County Exec. I now turn to County Council, then we'll break for lunch from 12:30 to 1:15.
Thank you, President Wasserman. There were no reportable actions taken at the closed session meeting of March 21, 2022. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Lee, on item 22, do you just want to make a motion for the $1,250? We'll cross that one off.
You read my mind, President Wasserman.
Second, Chavez.
Oh, I think you're muted, President Wasserman.
I am, thank you very much. All right, motion by Supervisor Lee, second by Chavez. We're on item 22. No public speakers on that item. Nancy, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Lee?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
Yes.
Supervisor Semidion?
Aye.
Vice President Ellenberg?
Yes.
President Wasserman?
Yes, thank you. Nancy, will you please confirm? We'll come back to, excuse me, we'll come back to 14 and 16 and then go with 26?
Yeah.
Thank you. Supervisor Semidion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just, you read my mind because I was trying to make sure I was clear about what was on our to-do list when we came back. So we will come back for 14 and then 16 because item 15 was approved on consent, yes.
Correct.
And then item 17, we have already taken up. And item 18, we've already taken up.
We're going to jump to 26 Supervisor.
All right. So that means 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25 have all been satisfactorily concluded. Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, they have, either by consent or public discussion.
All right. Then thank you very much. I will carry on with that understanding. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We return with number 14, Pete Rose's number. We're adjourned now until 1:15.